We're calling to order the Planning, regular Planning Commission meeting for November 18th, 2019. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hill?
President.
Commissioner Marks?
Here.
Commissioner Uring?
Here.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Here.
You have a quorum with Chair Jennings absent.
Okay, Chris Marks, will you lead us in the presence of allegiance?
Sure.
Do we have approval of the, a motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah, John, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda. Give me a minute to work this. I hadn't planned on doing this, but we want to, uh...
Continue item 5A.
Continue item 5A, continue. That's the only one. I'll approve the agenda as submitted with the 5A being continued until...
The date is uncertain.
Date uncertain.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved. Can we get a report on, posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on November 8th, 2019.
Okay, and Richard, would you like to update us on the staff on the fire?
Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, I'll give you a quick update. If I find the mouse. To let you know where we are to date, we've approved 181 single-family home, or, these are single-family home numbers. Single-family homes have been approved by our department, and 37 building permits have been issued by the Building Safety Division. Houses are still under construction, none have been completed, and we currently have nine homes under review. Our target is, right now, we believe to be 473 single-family homes, and we've achieved, we've approved 181 of those. We've also approved 100 accessory structures, and then 27 second units or accessory dwelling units. The number's got a little big there on the square for primary residences. It's not 18, it's 181 still. The top of the 1 is at the bottom of the box there. That's that funky-looking little arrow thing.
Say that again, I watched what you just said.
Oh, the text looks like it was too big for that box. Something happened when we converted this thing. It's not 18 single-family residences, it's 181. It's the top of the 1 there in the bottom of the box. There was a question by the Planning Commission last meeting, if they could see the application type by month, and so that's the purpose of this chart here. It's a lot of data on one chart, but essentially what you can see, if you look at, say, the highlights here, the orange color line, those are the APRs, WF, so that's where someone's rebuilding, and they could be doing either over 10% or, this is because the home had a site plan review in addition to the request. So in other words, they're putting the house back, they're within 10%, but it's over 18 feet or in a reduced side yard. Those are the bulk of our types of projects that are, we spend the most time on, and you can also see that between May and October, and my guess is by the end of the month, you'll see those have increased and stayed kind of constant. Now, of course, the blue lines that shoot up to the top that make it hard to read everything else and skew the scale, those are over-the-counter approvals. So those are additions up to 10% where they're not above 18 feet or in a side yard. They're not needing something discretionary. To date, we've issued about $1.1 million worth of fee waivers or refunds. We've grouped them into a combined group here, and those are for the fees, as I once again mentioned, those are fees for the Planning Department, as well as fees for the Building and Safety Division, Public Works, and all the other city reviewers. This set of items here demonstrates where the Building Safety Division is with their progress. So they've got 92 applications that are being prepared for building plan check submittal. So these are folks who have received their planning approval, but have not yet made their official submittal to the Building and Safety Department, or Division, excuse me, for plan check review. So those are 92 applications we anticipate to be turned into the city soon. We have reached out to them to find out why they have not submitted, and we're trying to help with those roadblocks that they may be feeling so that they can get into City Hall.
Is there some aging of those? How old are some of those, do you think?
Some of those go back until April and May.
So there's some reason why they're not bringing them in?
Right. It could be, it ranges from not realizing they actually have everything they need because of the confusion with the application, to essentially a funding issue.
Gotcha, okay.
We have 52 projects for single-family homes that are currently undergoing plan check, so those are ones that have made the submittal process, submittal into the program for Building Safety, they're getting plan checked, and then ideally soon we'll be able to get those to have building permits, so they could be added to the triangle you see there, which is the 37 permits that we've issued.
How long does it take it to get from building plan check to a permit issued, you know?
It's, on average, about three months, is what I'm seeing.
On that, as I remember, we had 35 issued last meeting, which is like two in two weeks. So are we really talking another year for the 52 that are in, in the process?
Hopefully that it won't be, if you're thinking two a week, 26 weeks, which would be 26 meetings. No, the new building official, Yolanda Bundy, has been reaching out and working with these folks to get over the roadblocks, and she has been personally escorting people around the building, helping them achieve whatever the hurdles they're having to get the plans approved. So she's having them, sometimes it's just what you need is a simple sit-down meeting with some of the city reviewers, and she's making that happen.
Thank you.
Since we're asking questions willy-nilly here, Richard, thank you for that graph. That was really helpful, and I just wondered if it looks like the approvals, the plan check, or what do you call them, just the over-the-counter ones, are there, they look like they might be starting to taper off, like we're getting them all in by now?
It's honestly hard to say, because there was also a slowdown in June, but they seem to be at least holding steady, if not a little lower.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Did we cut you off in the middle of your presentation?
No, that's the end of it.
Okay, thank you. We have any comments from the public?
Before we move on to that, I just, since this is related to fire rebuilds, Yolanda has coordinated a fire rebuild workshop that will be here at City Hall on, Richard, is it, I think it's the 23rd?
Saturday, 25th, 10 to 12.
So it's 25th?
One of the meetings got canceled today, that wasn't it?
That was, there was, there was something on the website that said 25th, 10 to 12, like...
It's a Saturday, and it's from 10 to 12. We'll confirm the date for you, but I just wanted to mention that, and the purpose is really, it's focused primarily on the building plan check process and walking people through some of these hurdles and some of the lessons that have been learned, and letting people know about the resources there are for getting help at City Hall, for getting through this process, just to try to facilitate people not getting hung up like we seem to have seen so far. So Yolanda, like Richard said, is really being very proactive about all this, as is the Planning Department, and again, we still encourage anybody, regardless of where you're at in the process, even if you have not hired an architect or a single consultant, we encourage you to drop into City Hall and have a meeting with Planning Staff at the Fire Rebuild Counter. If you don't want to drop in, feel free to call us and make an appointment, and we'll be glad to set up a time that works for you, but we know that people are overwhelmed by this process, and we want to answer as many questions as we can to help you sort through some of these big decisions and that are at the very beginning and all throughout the process.
Bonnie, just in that line, in that, the web, on the website, it talked about, Yolanda's going to talk about the changes in the code for building, and it would be good if you could put that in, I'm getting calls from people, and this is way above my pay grade.
Because you're, you're a building expert.
Yeah, exactly right. I mean, but somebody said, "Well, you know, I'm rebuilding, and I got to put solar panels in." Well, apparently, if, and I, and somebody then came back and said, "No, if you're part of the fire rebuild, you don't need solar panels," okay? And then someone additionally came back, then there was some article in the paper that said, "As long as you're tied into some solar farm someplace, that may eliminate..." All I'm, there are people that are confused.
Right, and that's, and I'm glad you mentioned that, because I...
And it's like Jeff Jennings said, you know, saying, "Trying to get a cost of what it's going to, you know, what it's going to cost you to do this, you get three bids and add them up."
Right.
That was the best joke he ever told. But he's, I mean, so people are just trying to figure out what is going, so if she can give us something in writing on that.
That, that is the other purpose of the workshop, and we'll, I'll mention to her that it would be useful to have something in writing, but that, yes, it, just to make things even more fun for everyone trying to go through this process, we have a building code change here, January 1.
And can, can we clarify that that was not the meeting? I think it may be the one that's been postponed to the New Year.
It's not that meeting. I double-checked, it is on the city calendar for this coming Saturday, the 23rd, from 10 to 12.
It was the question meeting. Well, while we're on this, though, I've been called by a lot of people on, "Do I have to have a solar panel?", and they read in the LA Times that the new building codes is every house in Malibu, I mean, in California has to have a solar panel.
People should contact the building official and get their questions answered. I appreciate that, that people contact their planning commissioners and people that they know, but they for sure should contact an expert that, you know, knows the ins and outs of the code, and I haven't seen the LA Times articles, but, you know, often, things are generalized because you can't get into all the nuances of code changes in, in an article that's just for the general...
So we don't know, we don't know if you have to put in solar panels or not?
I mean, for, do you mean for any new construction or fire rebuilds or what?
Apparently, there was a law passed that the new building code required solar panels.
But there are going to be exceptions to that, like there are for anything in the building code, so that's why it's not easy to say yes or no.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, do we have any public speakers? No. Okay, city commissioners' comments?
I'm hurt that Bonnie didn't consider me a building expert. That was, that was hurting me. I got, okay, just a couple. Administrative coastal development permits, Bonnie, I know you're, you're putting them out, and just, there was, there's one you issued down for Peter Morton, down on PCH. I, I didn't bring the address with me, but basically what happened, it was, I went past there when the sand and winds were, when the sand and winds were blowing, all right? So there was this wind advisory, and he's got a crane blocking one of the roads, one of the lanes on PCH, okay? So I went back and looked at the administrative coastal development permit, and there was nothing in there regarding traffic management plan. I said, "Okay." So a couple days later, you go back down there, and now he's got a steam shovel blocking the road, all right? All I'm saying is, if you, you know, especially stuff on PCH, if you're going to issue those things, I mean, we just got to be careful, because we don't want to block the roads when these people are sanding and winds are blowing, everybody's trying to get out, so just for whatever that's worth. Dark sky, who is responsible for making sure we implement the rules for the dark sky that were supposed to be in place by October 15th? Who in the city's got to do that? Because it ain't being done.
There's a whole process in the works. The first phase, Jessica Clevenger, I'm still getting used to your new name, is the point person in the Planning Department that has been working on implementation of the dark sky ordinance. The first phase of implementation is for all the gas stations in the city, they are required to comply with the ordinance by October 15th. Outreach started ahead of time to the gas stations, we had a contract planner working on that, she's still working on that. Since the deadline has come and gone, code enforcement is now involved, and so there are compliance deadlines related to code enforcement that are now being worked through.
Okay, so the Planning Department is the group that is focused on getting this thing enforced, is that fair?
That has been for the first, this first phase. We're also coordinating with the Building Safety Department, because they have the specific knowledge of lighting as it relates to the building code, that will be important for the next phase of implement, implementation, which has to do with commercial development, or not just commercial, but all non-residential developments citywide. So we are coordinating with Yolanda Bundy and her group for implementation of that part.
Cool. Just a quick one, accessory dwelling units, I know we've been talking about that for a number of meetings, again, I think we got a whole bunch of people confused over what they can or can't do, you know, is it 1,200 square feet, is it, so hopefully we'll see that coming before us sometime, before we all get old.
We've already heard it.
It's got to come back.
The accessory dwelling unit ordinance is going to come back to the Planning Commission in January. There have been some late-breaking changes to state law that require updates to the ordinance as we had originally prepared it to come back to you, so we're having to rejigger those a little bit and address some additional things, so that will come back in January, and we're in a hurry to get that done.
I agree. All right, I just got two last ones, and one, I got a call this, a couple weeks ago regarding somebody who's living next to a house that's being rebuilt, so, and they asked me, you know, "Does this person have a permit?", I said, "Hell, I don't know." So we went to OnBase and pulled it, and this, what I'm passing down is the permit we got for that particular property, all right? And a couple of things were interesting. One, the permit is there, but nobody signs it. There's no stamp, no signature, any place that said anybody in Malibu actually reviewed this thing. More importantly, if you go up to the top right, the description of the project was "interior structural remodel and exterior alterations." Where under exterior alterations, basically what they did, they stripped the house down to the studs, they removed the pool, I don't know what they did with the water, they took a wing of the house and brought it down to the ground and rebuilt it, and they graded the property. And then the planning, I guess the inspector went out there and looked at it and said, "Yeah, this is okay," which is, you know, I mean, I guess if you're going to do a permit, this is the way to do it. And then the interesting part even more was, down at the very bottom left, right-hand side, this thing was issued on 5/24/2019, and so when I looked at it, I said, you know, I got all these rebuilt people that are going through nine miles of barbed wire and broken glass trying to get a permit, and this guy walks in, not having anything approved, and is able to rebuild the house basically from the ground up, and he's got the city's blessing to do that. Now, I just, you know, and look, this is not my bailiwick, and this, but it just seems that there's something wrong with this process.
So, so I don't, this isn't really a great place to go through the details of this particular project, but the, there is more to this project than this, and more to this approval than this. The, for any project that gets a building permit, there are plans, so the permit is, you know, kind of the document, the memorialization of the fact that a permit was issued, but there's reference here, the plan check number...
No plan check signature, nobody knows who did it.
Well, there's an, I, I don't know the details of the, I'm not a building official...
I don't either. All I'm saying is, when you look at this, if you sit back and you say...
This is the very first question to ask, "Does it have a permit?" The next thing to do, if you really want to know all the details, is to come to the, to the City Hall and ask to see the plans and to talk to somebody in the Building Division about what was approved in association with this project. I'm not defending the project or the approval or anything else.
I'm not either.
This does, this is very incomplete information, and it indicates that there was a planning review, so there's a plan that goes along with this. So I wouldn't, I would not assume that this, this is the end of this project, it doesn't appear that it's been finalized, I, it's, I don't, I don't know.
I don't know either, but when you look at it, you sit back and say, again, you would, and again, I come from a different world, okay? It says typically someone would approve this, you'd have some signature on there, so you could track it back.
It's been, it's been through the plan check process, and somebody will have to final it at some point. I don't know if it's completed yet or not, it sounds like maybe it's still under construction, so if you'd like us to look into something, I'm happy to talk with you separate from the...
I would like to do that.
And Commissioner Uring, if I may add, it's not the city's policy to provide updated information about inspections and all of that into OnBase. All that is on the city's records program right now is, was a permit issued or not? And that's what you got, and then if you're actually interested in knowing the inspection's progress, that's something someone would have to come and speak to the...
No, I wasn't, I wasn't, all I, all I, when I went past, I know the contractor was working on the project, so when I walked by it, because I walk around with my dog in the morning, he, I said, "How's this going?", he says, "Great." The building inspector was just here and said, "This is great." So I read the permit, and I say, "Interesting."
And I, all I would like to just make clear is, if someone's interested in that information, they need to visit City Hall. Once the project is done and the permit is finalized, then a copy of the permit with all of the inspections is then placed onto our city's records database.
We'll chase it down, see what we can find.
Shouldn't somewhere the public be able to find out who issued it so they can go ask the questions?
Yeah, and that's, that is perfectly available, you just might not be able to determine this from the comfort of your computer at home. You may have to actually call City Hall or come visit City Hall, that's...
We'll do that, okay.
This is partial information, this is not meant to be complete information at this stage. In the future, we hope to have online permits, you know, have all the information as easily accessible to the public as possible. The information is available to the public at any time, you just, it's not all online.
Got it. Just, when I, again, from what I had, the conclusions that I reached could be wrong, could be right. Last one, I got a neighbor who had a chimney that was like eight inches or 10 inches or 12 inches above their roof, and apparently the fire code says it's got to be three feet, okay? So they put it up three feet, and they did not get a permit, and they admit that, right? So they're going through the process now, trying to get a permit done to do that. So this person called me, and I said, "No problem, here's policy number 43, because here's how it works. This, this is what's going to happen," all right? Except when we went to policy 43, nothing in that policy is what actually happened, all right? If you read the policy, it says, just a couple of big ones here, "All written complaints shall be subject, subject to inspection upon request by the person accused of the violation." So she requested, when the inspector came out, says, "Can I see the violation?", and the inspector says, "No, I can't show it to you. You got to file a Public Records Request Act," which was interesting, because if you read further in the thing, it says, "Complaints, complainants shall be informed of this policy at the time the complaint is filed. A disclosure in writing on the complaint form shall..." Let me go back. "...the complaint must state in writing on forms provided by the city that he or she understands that the complaint form is not protected from disclosure by any provision of the California Public Records Act." So it seems they got to file and say, "This is public," but yet, to get a copy of it, they got to go file some public records requests, which didn't make a whole bunch of sense to me. And then when they filed the public request, request act, they came back and said, "Who filed this complaint?", and they redacted the name of the filer, okay? Which I, I thought we were supposed, which just, I didn't think that was the policy we had.
It is the policy, to redact the information while an investigation is ongoing. The, the information for the, the person and anything that's identifiable is not part of the information that's released to the public or anybody while the investigation and the case is still ongoing. The complaint can be, can be viewed and was provided to the, the person, I believe in this case, you and I corresponded back and forth. I think you corresponded with a number of people about this, so...
No, just you, you're, you and Trevor, you're the two I talked to.
Okay, well, I think, I thought Richard was involved at some point, too, but anyway, it doesn't really matter, other than informa, the information that we can provide is provided, I'll have Pat weigh in as needed about information that is not provided during the investigation process.
So I just want to understand what the rules are. So if I get a, and I've never filed a complaint, I've never had one filed against me, so I'm, this is all new stuff to me, all right? But if a complaint is filed, I can't find out who filed it against me, is that correct?
During the, the pending investigation, correct, and so that's, the, the reason for that is to, to, A, ensure kind of the integrity of the investigation, and then B, not have a, a potential complaining, you know, neighbor or, or whoever suffer some type of negative consequences, and then he or she decides, "Listen, I'm out of here, I'm not going to, you know, talk to the city anymore," you know?
So, so once the complaint is finalized, either one way or another, the complaint's name comes out, is that correct? The name is disclosed?
Correct.
Okay. And then it also says at some place in here, that the complaint must state in writing on forms provided by the city, they understand the complaint form is not protected from disclosure, but the complaint form you sent me's got none of that language in it anyplace. Look, all I'm saying, here's the, all I'm trying to do, and, and I don't care, I don't care if we make people disclose their filing or don't disclose if they're complaining, I just, it, to me, it's the process that says, if I'm the complaint or complaintee accused, I'm the accused person, I'd just like to know what the hell is going on, so I can sort of follow the process, and, and I'm not getting different information from different people that says, you know, I got, this policy seemed to be fairly clear, that we went through and tried to, it actually got executed, and then, I don't know where the hell it went from there, so...
Well, the, it's the, it's a city council policy on how to deal with, with code enforcement, and we deal with it within the confines of, it hasn't been updated in some time, it, we deal with it in the confines of the Public Records Act and any other applicable laws, and that's the way we're implementing it today.
So that different than what the city council approves?
The ci, we implement the city council policy to the extent that it doesn't conflict with any other laws.
So, okay, so if I'm, if I'm a person, if I'm a resident...
With all due respect, this is getting into quite an extensive discussion that isn't really part of anything on the agenda, I feel like we should discuss it, and if we want to bring back an item related to it, I think it's fine.
Bonnie, I, I sent emails to you and Trevor, trying to get information so I wouldn't have to do this to them.
And it was provided.
No, it wasn't. I, you know, the question, I, the questions I asked, I never got any answer, I'm not, I don't want to...
Which question are you looking for an answer to? And if I can answer it now, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, I was there when they passed it, and it was, "Don't think on your neighbor because we're going to tell them you think on them." That was a policy put in effect by number 43, and the compliance officer, in fact, would think on the neighbor. Now, maybe that's changed, the question is whether it's changed, because then the question would come up, if, if, say I complained, and the compliance officer went to the neighbor and said, "John Mazza complained," do I have an action against the city? Because the city council went through a big deal, I can tell you, it was Paul Major Shad, and the fact that Gail Senter turned him in, and the fact the city council covered his ass by saying, "Who turned him in?", and they passed policy number 43, "Don't think on your neighbor because we're going to tell." Now it apparently is backwards. They won't think on the neighbor.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it, it's backwards, and I believe what, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that there's kind of this, this, you know, investigation stage, and, and I guess that's what the, the city in compliance with the Public Records Act is trying to protect, and that during the investigation, that there could be a certain situation where we're going to redact the name of the complaining, you know, resident, neighbor, et cetera, to ensure the, the integrity and that process is, is full.
Chair Mazza, just, look, I don't care what the rules are, all right? I, I really, if you want to have, identify who the complainer is, or don't, that's somebody else, all I wanted, all I'm concerned about is the fact that somebody should be able to go someplace, all right? And say, "Here's how it's going to be done." So you, I'll give you, and I'll give you the reason why. I'll go back to the temporary use permit for the, for the Whole Foods, all right? Two sets of rules. We had Whole Foods that wanted a temporary use permit, gave it to them for 48 hours, all right? When the rule said it's supposed to be 24 days. So if you got somebody you like, eh, take care of them. We had just the, the folks over on the...
Commissioner Uring...
Now, hang on, because this, look, this is, this is important stuff.
I think you're mischar, I agree with you, it is, and I think you're mischaracterizing it, and I know this is a, I just don't think that this is the way to resolve this. I, I hear what you're saying, that you would like it to be more clear about what the process is... that you would like it to be more clear about what the process is for code enforcement complaints for both the complaining party and the, the person being complained about. And I am happy to work with code enforcement on updating forms and things like that as necessary.
Cool, let's do that.
I'd like to make a motion to put this on the agenda because I too have questions and I don't wanna spend all night on this.
I wanna remind the commission too that I'm happy to provide this information for the public and all of that, but code enforcement is not the jurisdiction of the, the commission as we've discussed before. But if, if we want to have an item come back and explain some of these processes, we can, we can certainly do that.
Just give a set of rules. Just something, everybody knows what it is. That's all I want. Or whatever the rules you wanna have, I'm happy with.
Got it.
Got it. Okay, John, I'm done. I got done my.
So the end result of this is somebody gonna tell us if file, policy 43 as written is correct? Or should it be changed?
Policy, I'll ask the city attorney's office to take a look at policy 43. It is the purview of the city council whether to update it.
It's incorrect if it's not being followed.
It's still the purview of the, of the city council.
Well, I would assume, and this is my question of the attorney, I would assume that if the city council makes a policy that's not being followed, okay, if the, if the staff says, well, we don't like that one, then it's up to the city council to be told then.
Each of you were appointed by the city council member, and so if you have concerns about this, you can certainly reach out to your council members, but I don't know if Pat has any further comments.
Right, I mean, I, I would not characterize the, the current, you know, process that the city goes by as violating policy 43. I believe that that is, that policy is upheld in, you know, in, you know, the Public Records Act. And speaking to you, Commissioner, sometimes it can be more art than science. You know, there's many factors that go into every single case. And so while these policies lay out rules and, you know, these are the guidelines that, that the city should follow, every case has to be, you know, examined on a case-by-case basis.
And that's the problem. The problem is that once you have different rules for different things, people get to make different decisions. And I understand there's, you know, I just, if we get a set of rules, let's get a set of rules and we can figure it out from there.
Yeah, first by way of news.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. Do we have a consensus we're bringing back an item?
We were told we couldn't.
Okay.
If you want an informational item, we can do that. If all we want is an updated code enforcement form that can address any needed changes, then.
Okay, then I'll take Craig's motion. Does anybody have a second to have an informational item come back?
I'll just warn you that we have an awful lot of items coming up on agendas, so.
You're seconding? Craig made the motion.
Then you second or no?
No.
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. By way of some news, Hans Letz's KBO reported that the San Francisco Chronicle reports that, this week, that a fire chief in the north has acknowledged, one of the elephants in the room that we faced here about the PSPS, the Public Safety Power Shut-Off. Up there, they're having it with PG&E, similar to the way that we have it with Edison here. And we've pointed out that really this seems to be more about Edison's liability than it is about public safety. And this week, we have a fire captain, a fire chief up there saying that by doing this, we're trading one set of risks for another set of risks, pointing out that there have been houses up there now that have burned down because people have started generators and improperly handled them. There have been, houses have burned down because people have had candles out. There have been people nearly killed barbecuing indoors. And apparently Edison officials are facing the state legislature today, or they face them today supposedly. So this is finally on the state legislative radar, so let's keep an eye on where this PSPS thing is going. But it sounds like the common sense side of this is starting to get heard. Also on fire stuff, and another elephant in the room, last week I came to council and made some noise about the discontinuity between, on the one hand, the recognition that the lesson that a lot of people have learned is when there's a fire, stay and fight because the fire department's not gonna help you, et cetera. And on the other hand, the sheriff saying 100% evacuation, zero tolerance, everybody's gotta get out. And we got some sort of mixed comment from the council on that. Well, Hans, again, KBO, give him another plug, spoke to Chief Osby, the fire captain, and he, he recognizes the elephant in the room. And he says, and I'm quoting him here, I do know that people are going to stay, and for those people that are staying, we want to have a relationship where they are properly outfitted and properly trained. So the fire department recognizes that, you know, some of us can be helpful. And so I think the question is now, can the council or manager Feldman help to bridge the gap between the fire department and the sheriff? Because, you know, the city has, knows much more about what's going on from one neighborhood to the next. The fire department recognizes the need to, in effect, deputize some people at some level. Maybe that's not the right word, but to just recognize that there are gonna be people that are gonna be working side by side with them. And the sheriff needs to hear about that and needs to have some kind of procedure to accommodate it. On dark sky, yeah, I had some of the same questions about the compliance. I'd also, I'm curious, about six or eight months ago, there was some talk about changes to streetlights that Public Works was gonna look at, and they said that the city owned five or 10 streetlights. And I came back and I said, well, that can't be true because there are at least 30 streetlights in Big Rock alone that the city owns. And we've since learned that it costs about $700 per fixture to retrofit those with a shield so they don't spread light as discriminantly and to put some kind of element in there that has a timer so they can be off and on or motion sensor depending on the context of the, the location. So they're basically smart streetlights. And that just hasn't happened yet, so I'm curious where that is going. And maybe when I'm done, the staff can get back to that with some sort of progress note. But let me just add, finally, on lighting, I received a brochure in the mail from a company that advertises that it will happily come and charge you a lot of money to put string lights on your landscaping. And that's not legal under the dark skies ordinance right now. It's not allowed. But they're, they're advertising this and I've seen some people taking them up on it. And so I guess I'd like some clarification on, there are two provisions in the ordinance that seem to conflict. On the one hand, no string lights on landscaping, period. And on the other hand, you can have holiday lighting between November 15 and January 15. I would read those together as to say that, yeah, you can have the lighting on the house or maybe on other structures, but not on the landscaping. But I, I'm wondering if there's an interpretation on that. And then finally, I'll just, I'm asking all these questions altogether. You can answer them. There's an STR meeting on the council agenda on December 3rd. What is that gonna be about? I thought we've just had that. And those are my questions. Bonnie, do you, you might be the one to try to answer.
Yes, sure. The council meeting on December 3rd is a special meeting where the council will be reviewing a draft short-term rental ordinance. That's what the purpose of that is. The meeting that was held a couple of weeks ago was for the council to review the information they'd previously asked for before the Woolsey Fire and give staff direction, which has been done, so it'll be coming back.
It's like the second reading?
No, it's a, it's the first reading of a draft ordinance.
And then on the, the dark skies, is there, is there any interpretation on holiday lighting versus no lights on landscape?
Holiday lighting would include anything related to the holiday. I'm not gonna get into, you know, determining whether this is a holiday color or not a holiday color or where it is on a property. If landscape, if lighting, string lights and things like that are put up between the dates and the ordinance for holiday lighting, then we're not gonna enforce against that. Any other string lighting is, that's outside of the context of what's allowed in the ordinance would be subject to enforcement.
Currently in effect?
It is.
It is currently in effect.
You drive down the highway, you got Nobu and Malibu Seafood and all of them.
String lights are allowed in certain areas and in the context of dining areas.
No, I mean on the trees.
This is for residential, it's not allowed on landscape. I don't think that.
Commercially, if you've got your palm tree strung to the top with lights, it should be gone, right?
Yes.
And somebody's taking care of that?
There are a lot of things we're working on, of course, otherwise. It's in the mix.
I don't have much to, kind of new topics, but I did just wanna cover, or just point out, in the footage they showed of the fires that recently came through, I mean, I thought it was, you know, positive kind of observation that they had a lot of fire personnel accompanying people back in their homes to get medicines, et cetera. So I would hope that we'd have a consistent, you know, situation here. So if people do make that choice to stay and defend, or if they choose to leave, they at least can get back in to get critical items, which I know a lot of people are trying to do that during the Woolsey Fire and weren't able to. So just to kind of play on some of the other topics that were brought up. Other than that, nothing more.
My only comment on what Craig said is I wouldn't believe Fire Chief Osby if he paid me. Okay, he, he did not tell us for a whole year that they stood down and did no structural protection for Malibu. He put my life at risk because I thought maybe someday someone come help me up my house, you know, save my house and my neighbors. And it's apprehensible. Hope everybody read the, the independent study. The only other thing is, we had a lot of locals die in the last two weeks. So I'd like to dedicate this meeting with your approval to Les Wiggins, who ran the Kentucky Colonel for 40-plus years, Andy Cohen, who was the best public safety commissioner we've ever had, and a guy named Charlie DeGarmo, who was a math teacher in Malibu for 40 years, 50 years, and ran the last horse boarding facility on Point Dume and was very well-known. So with, with your consensus, I'd like to do that.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed. That closes public comment. We're now down to the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to pull anything?
Take comments from the public for section 2A.
We asked for comments and they weren't.
And you didn't get any, okay.
Correct.
Alright.
Okay, nobody pulling anything? Okay, received and accepted. Now we're on to item 5B, which is local coastal permit program amendment number 19-002 and zoning text amendment number 19-004, amendments to the local postal program and Malibu municipal code to foster fire-resistant landscape citywide. May we have a report, please?
Yes, good evening, members of the commission. The next item on the agenda is the proposed fire-resistant landscape ordinance, which includes amendments to both the Malibu municipal code and the local coastal program. On October 14th, staff brought an item to ZERACSE, the zoning code, or zoning ordinance and code enforcement subcommittee, that included some potential amendments to the existing zoning and landscaping ordinances. The purpose of the amendments is to reduce the fire hazard risks and the spread of fires to minimize, to minimize the fuels available in the landscape. The first proposed ordinance or amendment was to prohibit the planting of highly flammable trees within the landscape. Staff proposed to prohibit the planting of eucalyptus, pine and palm trees due to the oils and the saps that are carried throughout the eucalyptus and the pine trees and the fire hazards that result from dead palm fronds that develop around the base of palm trees. The subcommittee directed staff to move forward with an amendment that would prohibit the planting of palm trees that have the potential to grow 18 feet or higher. A second proposed amendment was to limit the height of new trees planted under and next to utility lines and established utility easements. Each year, power companies perform maintenance or trimming of existing trees in order to keep the branches and leaves from blowing into or growing into active power lines, thereby starting fires. Recently, the regulations that mandate the amount of trimming required have increased. To minimize the amount of trimming required and reduce potential fire hazards, staff proposed an amendment that would limit the height of trees proposed under or near power lines. Power companies advise trees planted below or within 20 feet of power lines to have a maximum growth height of 25 feet. Staff has proposed 18-foot, 18-foot maximum growth height, knowing that some species, when planted under the right conditions, can exceed the projected maximum growth height. Power companies also advise a maximum growth height of 40 feet for trees planted 20 to 50 feet from a power line. For this distance, staff proposed a maximum growth height of 30 feet. ZERACSE's directed staff to move forward with the proposed amendment. However, a determination on the recommended maximum growth height was not established at ZERACSE's and can be altered with the direction of the planning commission. Additional amendments proposed to ZERACSE centered on creating a five-foot defensible space around structures as advised by the National Fire Protection Association. Defensible space is defined as the natural or landscaped area around a structure that is maintained and designed to reduce fire damage. Maintaining a defensible space around structures reduces the risk that fires will spread and provides firefighters safer access to threatened areas. Defensible face, space zones around structures vary, but typically they range from 0 to 5 feet, 5 to 30 feet, and 30 feet to 100 feet. In order to create a five-foot dispense, a defensible space zone, staff proposed prohibiting highly flammable mulch, trees and brush within 5 feet of structures as recommended by the National Fire Protection Association. From 5 feet to 30 feet, they recommended limiting the use of flammable mulch and vegetation to non-continuous patches or areas. In addition to mulch and vegetation, staff proposed limiting wood fences, walls and detached structures that are flammable within 5 feet of the structure. The subcommittee directed staff to move forward with the amendments to create the five-foot defensible space buffer. An additional amendment was brought to ZERACSE to incentivize the use of fire-resistant fencing and diminish the need for tall hedges. The amendment proposed allow front yard fences, gates and walls to be constructed to a maximum of 6 feet with solid material and allowed them to be viewed impermeable. ZERACSE's advised staff to remove the amendment as they felt a 6-foot solid fence or gate would create a security issue for the homeowner. Staff is consulting with law enforcement and the fire department for comments on the proposed amendment. To date, law enforcement and the fire department have both indicated that a 6-foot solid fence or gate would not create additional security issues. Also, after receiving feedback from ZERACSE, they did not favor the prohibition on planting eucalyptus and pine trees entirely, as discussed earlier. Staff drafted an alternative proposed amendment. Staff has been consulting with senior ecologists and biologists as well as researching fire hazard plant lists. And five-tree-in-trub species are commonly identified as potential fire hazards. These species include eucalyptus, pine, cypress, cedar and the tree of heaven. These species have been known to carry all, in addition to these saps, that remain very flammable. And so instead of just allowing them or prohibiting them completely, staff is saying, don't, don't plant up within 30 feet of a structure. Lastly, staff is proposing to return the landscaping ordinance, which was currently MMC Chapter 9.22 to Title 17 where it originally resided. In 2011, the chapter was removed from Title 17 in order to expedite amendments to establish, to the established California Assembly Bill 1881. Moving the chapter back to Title 17 would put it back under the planning commission's purview. The proposed MMC amendments would include the creation of MMC Chapter 17.53, moving the entire landscaping ordinance. Additional amendments would include changes to the definition section, the creation of the fire protection standard section, and amendments to the general development standards and distances between building sections. Lastly, the amendment to create a reference, to correct a reference from Chapter 9.22 to 17.53. The proposed amendments would also necessitate amendments to the LCP, including the general definitions chapter and the general development standards and distance between buildings. including the general definitions chapter and the general development standards and distance between buildings. In addition to the proposed amendment, staff is drafting a recommended fire-resistant plant list to provide to property owners. The list is currently being reviewed by the city biologist, and staff is also creating a firescape webpage where we will provide resources and ideas on how to create more defensible space within the landscape. Finally, staff is seeking recognition or recommendation to create an outreach program that would encourage firescaping and emphasize the need for proper landscaping and vegetation maintenance. This slide shows some of the resources and the people that we've been consulting in drafting this proposed amendment. They include several different fire departments, including the Ventura County Fire Department, LA County Forestry, and Escondido Fire Department, including our own Jerry Vendemuler, the fire safety liaison. Staff has received some correspondence, which has been distributed to you as of today. And just to clarify, one of the comments, I don't know if they're here or not, one of the, two of the residents, Ann and Paul Hoffman, were wondering whether or not these proposed amendments applied to existing landscaping or just new landscaping. And I just wanted to clarify that they apply to new landscaping. And that concludes my presentation. Staff's available for questions.
Go ahead.
Hi, Jessica. So shifting the water stuff over into this code and unifying the structure, that means that there have been no changes from dot oh-three-zero through dot zero eight-zero? The wholesale, so the wholesale section has just been moved over? There haven't been any changes?
Right, to the existing landscape ordinance.
You have questions or you want to go to public comment? Okay, we'll open public comment. First comment is Pat Healy, followed by Georgia Goldfarb, followed by, last but not least, Norm Haney.
Good evening, commissioners. Tonight, I'm representing the Malibu Monarch Project. Eucalyptuses are one of the five trees that are suggested to be banned. And staff, and we would like eucalyptus to be excluded from this because the California monarch is on the brink of extinction. And eucalyptus happen to be the favorite roosting site of monarchs. They are, they provide the dappled sunlight that monarchs like. They act as a windbreak and they provide nectar. Many of the roosting sites in our area are indevelopable areas and are in need of repair and restoration. Some sites are just suffering from old age. The natural life of the tree, you know, has run its course. Others have been overpruned and destroyed by property owners and some by the most recent fire. Grants are now available from the state because they recognize the dire situation that the monarch butterfly is in. And in fact, the Wildlife Conservation Commission, this Thursday, has four different items on the agenda to give grants to protect the monarch butterfly. So we're asking you to please exclude eucalyptus from your list and also any other trees that might be banned that a monarch expert might say should go into a restoration roosting site. Thank you.
Georgia Goldfarb.
Thank you, planning commissioners. There is much to agree with in the proposed legislation, but tree height next to power lines is not, unfortunately, one of them. CPUC's recommendations in the past for their decisions were to protect worker safety and reliability of the system and to cause as little disruption to the natural environment and the aesthetics of affected property as possible, to the extent that they offer guidance about trimming beyond minimum clearances. They, in their notations, they referred to a lack of scientific evidence for even the eighteen-inch clearance requirement. And I think that can be extended to the four-foot, much less what we have in the proposed limitations, which are eighteen feet within twenty feet of the wires and thirty feet within fifty feet. So that means there's not going to be any oaks or sycamores around there, which are critical habitat, I'm sure you all know this, in the front yards of usual-sized properties. Anywhere around these lines, they're just too tall. And when you add the restrictions on distance from the house in terms of tree planting, tree cover is going to be really limited. I say climate change cannot be ignored and that Malibu has an absolute responsibility to decrease heat production and increase carbon sequestration. This cannot be accomplished by limiting front yard plants to shrubs. Trees decrease gain, heat gain in homes and resultant energy usage, and shade decreases the ambient temperature. So I would suggest other options, such as undergrounding wires, use of protective coatings, and even trying to form a relationship between property owners and Edison to share cost for undergrounding. So I think there's been a lot, too much discussion and assumptions and not enough scientific background to support these heights. The other issue I have is with native plant restriction. So I don't think that these plants have been shown to be fire accelerants. They just need to be maintained, as we all know. And I would say they're critical, especially sage, critical element to coastal sage scrub, buckwheat, critically important pollinator plant, and laurel sumac, also critical and has roots forty-foot deep. So if people are going to dig that out to develop, that's going to be really challenging, especially on a steep slope. So I would say if these plants are hydrated and probably maintained, they are not a fire hazard and are critical plants in our ecosystems. So I, we must act beyond our own fears and create the most protective regulations for our ecosystem. We can be in balance with nature. They should be based on science.
Norm?
Good evening, planning commissioners. I agree with the provisions of this ordinance, but I also agree that we should provide trees in areas that are not close to houses and will not increase the fire hazard. So the state of California owns an awful lot of property, and it might be a good idea if some of those areas, which are not close to residential homes, could be used to plant trees that monarch butterflies like and, you know, which benefits the ecosystem. I'm sure the butterflies don't mind where they have to fly. The most important thing to the monarch butterfly is, I think it's milkweed, and there's simply not enough of that. That's where they lay their eggs and their caterpillars grow. So I'm really in support of the ordinance. Losing your house is a devastating experience. And although I know a lot of environmentalists don't agree with me, but I think human beings are part of the environment and we have a right to be here. And, you know, one of the things that I do see here, though, is the shade structures. It seems to fairly consistently think that all shade structures are flammable. But if you had a metal sage or shade screen that was not flammable, then it seems to me like, you know, that could be approved. One last thing, I'm not sure what happened to the standard A, B, C fuel modification zones that the fire department insisted on, which is the first twenty feet is defensible, but no flammable shrubs in that area. The shrubs have to be small and not flammable, such as grass. In the next, in the next eighty feet, again, no shrubs that are flammable. It's called the irrigation zone. The plants need irrigation because they have a lot of water in them and they're not flammable. The next one hundred feet is Zone C, and that is the thinning zone, which means you remove all the dead trees and you lollipop the sumac bushes. And I'm just not sure, I mean, it seems to me like that's been around a long time, and if it's followed, it works pretty well. Thank you very much.
Okay, that ends the public comment. Would anybody else like to make a comment? Okay, closed. I suggest we go through this in sections so we can keep it straight.
Vice Chair Mazza?
I'd like to make a motion.
I was going to suggest if Jessica had any answers or clarifications about public comment, that might help with your discussions. Was there anything, Jessica, that you wanted to address? For example, I was thinking that we're not proposing in this ordinance to alter the fire department's fuel modification requirements, for example.
That's correct. The fuel modification zones, everything remains the same. They have some, as you stated, if everything was followed exactly as they required, it would be great. But this is our defensible space zones, which have been recommended by several different of the fire departments and the National Fire Protection Association. They would just increase the regulations on our end in planning. So we're not accidentally approving shrubs or trees within, you know, too close to a structure and then the fire department has to deal with after the fact.
Can you, Jessica, can you explain how that works? If the fire department says in Zone B, you've got eighty feet, and we say you can plant trees in there, are we, that in contradiction to what their requirements are? And then if so, why should we have an ordinance?
When somebody applies for landscaping, those plans are also taken, obviously, to the fire department and they're looked at for their fuel modification. They get approvals for their fuel modification. There's been a lot of cases where those plans have come back stamped approved and there is vegetation there. I don't know if it's vegetation that they consider to be okay with regards to fire or if it's just something that they missed. This would just strengthen the ordinance and it basically give us two catches. Catch it in planning and they'll catch it in the fire department, the fuel mod.
Is there anything, well, these are LCP, so theoretically, the city, if somebody comes in the next day and plants fifty palm trees, you can go out and cut them down? Theoretically.
Well, we're not going to cut them down, but yes, it's.
You can order them cut down.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion.
What's that?
I'd like to, today we got several hundred pages of new material, some of which at a glance looks like it might be really helpful. And I'm certain that the majority of us have not even gotten through that. So I have some questions about how we would do this. I would make a motion for continuance. And the question in my mind would be, to what extent can we or should we talk about general concepts, specific things, get into any discussion tonight about stuff to sort of try to flesh out where we might be heading or whether that's maybe not legitimate and we can't be discussing it and just leaving it hanging and whether we just need to, if my motion needs to be, let's continue it, period, and walk away.
Well, and correct me if I'm incorrect, we can decide at any point to continue a hearing. Once we've opened it, we can discuss anything we want. And on that subject, so if it looks like towards the end, towards, you know, maybe an hour or two from now, we decide, well, we don't know enough to make a motion, you can make a motion to continue at that time. I think at this time to make a motion to continue, it's over. Is that correct? If that passes, the discussion's over, once we vote to continue.
Correct. Correct, yes.
So if you want to make that motion, then wait until you feel frustrated.
Well, to me, the ideal would be to sort of share some things that we might feel sort of clear about, but I, ultimately, I'm going to not be able to vote one way or the other in the end. I know because there's a couple hundred pages of stuff that, you know, at a glance is like, "Oh, this looks like really deep and helpful and not something we've seen yet." And I haven't had time to parse that and I'm sure we're all feeling that.
And all I'm saying is, you can't do that unless you do that after you've said what you want to say. So you make your motion to continue later on in the discussion.
If we get halfway into the discussion and we talk about a bunch of things, we can still leave it hanging at that point?
Yeah.
At any point, you can make a motion to continue.
I want to ask a clarifying question. There was something that Senario John called out where somebody planted fifty palms and you said they could be cut down per this ordinance if they went in theoretically soon. Could you make that same statement on something that had been planted ten years ago and they're against this policy? Is that different?
The policy is always supposed to be for new or updated landscaping. So if they took those trees out, but basically new landscaping, and it would be applied to that.
Thank you.
So, I got a couple, and I'm close to Commissioner Hill. I mean, there's just a ton of stuff. And I mean, let me ask a couple of questions. Did you look, are there any other cities that have done something like this that you've talked to that we can use for some guidance in terms of what they did?
There are several different cities that have done certain amounts. There are cities, I think it was San Marino, that actually went in and eradicated all of the eucalyptus. We're not proposing anything like that. Ventura, the city of Ventura, followed the five-foot defensible space with regards to mulch and tree and shrub and any kind of fuel habit, fuel that would be around the structures. They implemented that into their code. Several of the other cities as well. Escondido Fire Department has banned palm trees. I haven't seen a city that has done everything that we're proposing, but there are several cities out there that are doing some of what we're proposing.
You know, just to get back to Commissioner Hill's comment, and I mentioned this to Richard when he called this afternoon, that, you know, this is an important topic. I mean, and you're right, there's a ton, when I started to read, I tried to read this starting at six o'clock tonight and I didn't get very far, all right? And I may have missed some stuff, so I don't know. But you really would like to get this done right. And, you know, one of the suggestions I made to Richard, it would be great to have somebody here who we could talk to and say, you know, are we right? Is this, do I understand what you're talking about? Are there better ways to do this? So, you know, it would have been nice to have that happen. And maybe if we do continue this, we can make that work in the next piece.
Can I just add that I spoke to Clark Stevens from the Conservation District of the Mountains? It's a long, no, not, no, no.
It's the Resource Conservation District.
Yeah, the Resource Conservation District of the Santa Monica Mountains. And he wanted to be here and felt like he could be really helpful, but he had a prior engagement. So he would be somebody who, I think, would, I mean, I think we should have several people in that room.
Whatever, look, if we're going to, you don't want to have any more houses burned down. So the more we can do to prevent that, the better off we're going to be. The other thing, you made a comment that said you talked to the sheriff and the fire department, who said six-foot fences were not a problem. Is that, okay?
That's correct.
Okay. And, you know, I just found it interesting because I was in some meeting with, who's the new sheriff? Head of the sheriff? Beanaweva, okay? Who was asked, and this was at Duke's Restaurant, I think it was, over the hell of a meeting.
I remember that.
I was there also.
Yeah, okay. And, I mean, he made a big deal about the fact that says, in terms of safety, the last thing you want to do is have a whole bunch of obstruction in front of your house because that's where people hide if they're trying to get in there. And the second thing is, when the sheriffs come, they can't see anything. So they have no idea what the hell is going on. So it was just, your comment was different than what I heard at that meeting. So I don't know who in the sheriff's department you're talking to, but he ought to talk to Villanueva and both of those guys get themselves on the same piece of sheet music.
The only comment I'd make, just in context, from, I agree, I heard the same comment, but when comparing a fence, which is, you know, planer, to a three-dimensional, thirty-foot-high, unmaintained hedge wall, it seems like there'd be less place to hide on a flat wall.
Yeah.
So in that sense.
I don't know, just like, I mean.
Yeah, you want to make.
When I listen to it, I sort of said, based upon what her saying, what did him say, you know, I'd like to have somebody sit down and say, here's the right answer.
I caught the same.
I'm just trying, I'm not an expert in that.
It may vary from person to person. We spoke with one of the sheriff's deputies who. We spoke with one of the sheriff's deputies who is a longtime deputy in Malibu, and his, he felt like a six-foot solid fence or wall is not gonna keep them from seeing what they need to see, and that the benefits of having something non-flammable seemed that it would, that it would work.
Well, I can tell you this, I just wanna make a comment. I'm gonna come from this from having lived and been at two houses that had fire come directly up to them, and one house had burned right over the top of one of them. And so I was standing there with a hose or a shovel, depending on what was available. So I'm gonna come out to what actually happens in these fires. And in the latest fire on Zumares, we had three houses burned down. Every single one of them burned down because of hedges. Could not see the house was on fire, the hedges burned and caught the house down on fire, and in one case, it burned the neighbor's house down and not its house. So we have to look at this also on what it does to the neighbors. In this case, one house was new, stucco, metal windows, didn't burn. House next door, it didn't own the hedge, burned to the ground because it was next to the hedge. So I'm gonna, you know, have that bias. And by the way, I live on Point Two. Anybody who's ever driven down Cliffside or most of the other residential streets know that the hedges are not, they, they put up fences, then they put the hedges behind them. And on Cliffside, the average hedge is over twelve feet. Okay? Some of them are almost twenty. So it's not, this is not, this reason that, oh gee, you can put up a wood fence so you don't put up a ficus hedge, is not true. Okay? It's demonstrably not true. And it's because we don't have code compliance on hedges, which I understand is a big problem. But that, let's, I suggest that we, first, I suggest we go through what we can go through. Okay, go ahead. Sure?
Enforcement. Who the hell's gonna enforce this?
This would be enforced just like any other part of the zoning code.
And that, they, that's why I asked the question.
Not only the zoning code, but it's, it's based on development applications, and so there would be a final inspection and the, the planting plan that's in place will govern what, you know, is legal or not legal on the property.
Best laid plans of man and man, and I understand all that, but, I mean, earlier this evening, Commissioner Hill brought up lights on string lights, right, or whatever how it was on the poles, and are we enforcing that? We don't have, you know, we got a lot to do, you know, so you can't really get to all this stuff. And I'm just, look, we gotta do something, but I'm just wondering if we're gonna go through the effort of making some rules that people have to follow, how comfortable are we that we're actually gonna get people to follow these things? Because, you know, I mean, what happens is, if people figure out that, that nobody's looking, they do what they want.
But, but, on the other hand, that, that is true to some extent, but most of the people follow most of the rules. And so that is, I think, the benefit of moving this forward. And keep in mind, this is direction from the city council that they wanted to address this as quickly as possible. This is not the only bite at this apple. This is a first cut at dealing with these things. The city council was primarily focused on the landscaping aspects of, of this fire-scaping kind of effort. One of the other things that is going on right now is that our Public Safety Manager, Susan Duñez, has just kicked off a wildfire safety plan, which she received a grant for. That, the scope of that project is also going to address some of these issues, and the housing element update, interestingly, also is going to, due to state law, require an update to our safety element and our hazard element. And so when that comes back before you, there will be more opportunities to address these things. So don't, I just, I'm not trying to direct you one way or the other in terms of dealing with this, I just want you to keep in mind that the city council made this a priority issue, and this is not the only opportunity there will be to address it. So if everything doesn't happen in this first ordinance, it's not the end of the story.
When do you think the how, the stuff, and, and again, I read it quickly, so not, but it seemed to me that one of the big things is, the documents we got over today stated that it's as much the house, okay, the way the house is built and what, protecting the eaves and that kind of stuff-
Right.
-that has as, as much of an impact on protecting the structure as maybe more in some cases than does the foliage. When do we see that? Because, look, if we're gonna do this, let's do it. So when do you think we'll see something on that?
Well, the, the city council's direction, which we're implementing here, was focused on the landscape stuff, the landscape aspects of this. My sense is that they would be amenable to, you know, further work and in terms of an ordinance to deal with those things, and whether it would fall into the building code or the zoning code, that's-
There's nothing on the calendar says this is coming anytime in our near future.
It's, it's not rolling right this minute.
Another, another thought, I, I thought it was pretty effective on the dark skies when we had both city council and planning all up here together and we had a conversation on it. I mean, this thing seems important to me enough, I, I think we should have the conversation tonight, we're already starting it, but it seems like we should have this in front of the whole, you know, get a bigger, a bigger notification out there, just get more input and have a really broad conversation. I mean, that, that's, this, this topic seems to deserve that, kinda like we did with dark skies.
And I don't, I don't disagree, but also keep in mind that a lot of the strategies and measures that, that are talked about in here and in the correspondence that we've received, we don't have to codify them, you know? I think there's so much interest and concern in the community about hardening your properties and stuff, that a lot can be accomplished with outreach and education, and so, you know, we, we may not need to, I think we can start that right away without waiting on, you know, specific rules to be put in place. That's, you know, that's my hope, and, and part of what Jessica's working on will be a webpage with additional resources and stuff, and it can include links to, you know, all of the documentation that we've relied on here, and, you know, anything else that people have provided that would be useful to address these things.
I just wanna point out, when I drive to the market right now, I pass four houses that are under administrative development permits, being remodeled. They're still being worked on. All four of them have installed either six-foot fences or ficus fences over eight feet across the front of them, and this is while they're being inspected.
If you would contact me and let me know about that, I can send somebody out.
I will, once you explain forty-three to me.
Explain what?
Policy number forty-three. Okay? And then we will.
You can still let me know the addresses and we can have an inspector go by. If it's an active construction project where someone's doing inspections, that's a, that's a different matter than if somebody files a complaint.
Well, that's what I wanna point out. It is a different matter, is, it's out of your purview and the, and the permit department's allowing it to happen.
We work very closely with them, if you'll let me know.
Okay. Now, I, I think at least we can go through some things we can straighten out. And I think we have, Steve's right, this guy, I only read one of these, this guy, Klaus Ratke. Personally, I'd hire him to write the whole thing. Seems like he knows everything, but I just skipped, skipped it, skimmed it. One of the things, I'd like to go over definitions first, if we could, so we can tie them all together. And one of the things that bothers me is all our definitions have to do with five feet from a house, a structure. We never say the word eaves, and eaves is where all the fires start, and it's not part of the TDSF. So I think any distances we have that involve structures should be defined as distances between the eaves.
Or any portion of the structure.
And also on the tree. We should consider the drip line. I was down in a gully fighting fires, and I wasn't afraid of the eucalyptus trees, they were tall. They weren't gonna toast me. But the pine trees that were sticking out twenty feet on either side were super dangerous. So it doesn't really, if you, if you plant a citrodora eucalyptus, its branches are maybe five to ten feet from the, from the trunk. If you plant a blue gum, they're maybe thirty feet. And it's, it's the branches that burn you down, not the trunk. So I'd like to make all these fire provisions, make the definition from the canopy, mature canopy, and mature drip line, and between buildings, the-
Any portion of the building?
The, the roof line, rather than just structure, because structure's basically the walls.
I would agree with that, and can, can we memorialize some of these things as we go along? So, and do we need to formally vote on each item as we go? Sort of a straw vote kinda thing?
Perfect, yeah, a straw vote would, and then, yeah.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion that that's how we measure everything in this ordinance.
Agreed.
Agreed.
One other observation, the, the term non-flammable, how much heat are you gonna apply? Everything will burn, so do we need a more, kind of a, like Class A, Class B type thing?
That, that, that to me, I don't wanna take up a lot of time here, but there's so much of this that's focusing on a sort of species by species, this is better than that kinda thing, and everything burns. And I think that, that, I think we're probably right to focus on a few key species as we have, and the rest of the list of things down the list is, you just have to assume it burns.
Well, and I'm talking also about the materials for, 'cause there's some talk of fences of non-flammable materials.
Well, let's get to fences. We'll get to that.
Okay, so, but my main point is that when we, can we get away from such a general term as non-flammable to be more some type of, you know, I don't know, grading scale or something? I, I don't know what the best way is.
Is there a def, is there a definition in the, in the section that-
What I would, I would suggest that you, we don't put in the, the code, something that is hard for a planner or anybody else to get the information on. And that's why tables are important. There are definitions in our code of flammable and non-flammable, et cetera. If we get it down to the nitpicking, is this thing point seven percent flammable versus point three?
Well, I'm not saying we define our own scale, it's more that we refer to some other scale. I know in fire terms, there's Class A, Class B, like roofing materials, I don't know if there's something comparable for plants, and like, just specifically, page eight has non-combustible materials as incapable of igniting, et cetera. Is that sufficient? I, I don't know.
Well, that's a question I think we should leave staff to come back with this, with a question, rather than trying to define it, 'cause we don't know-
Yeah.
-what it is. Now, there's one other definition I'd like to bring up, and that is, and I brought this up to Richard today.
Just, just to reiterate then, do we, do we have a consensus to research what an appropriate scale of flammability is for reference in either building materials or foliage?
I would say for building materials, but for foliage, it's all flammable.
Yeah, I mean, believe me, it is.
No, that's why we're talking-
Go after a fire, there's nothing, no green bush there.
So building material would be good with some, some reference.
But again, again, when we do approval, we don't approve that you use USG's Class Four Roofing Shingle, et cetera, and you're gonna have to go through infinite detail on every product used.
Somewhere between finite and infinite.
And they're probably there somewhere, but are you gonna look up every nail? Does that nail melt?
No, just some, some gradation, you know, just so we can have, 'cause-
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, you're gonna have to specify that material.
John, and, and if I, just for a second, I mean, I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Marks. I mean, when we get to the houses and the building that Sheriff knows, that's one of the big things in this, these reports to say, that's what you should be taking a real good look at, 'cause that could protect your house. So I'm not sure what the, and I'm not a builder, so I don't know what, but I think you're right. If we get to that point, there should be some chart that we use that sort of says, here's what you wanna be able to put in to your house, and maybe it varies depending upon where you're living.
But we're not doing, we're not doing the building code tonight, so we can't do that. That's a building code item.
Yeah, I feel like, I do think that that gets into the building code realm.
Now, I assume the state is coming up with all kinds of stuff, and they're gonna-
I wouldn't count on them. Maybe, I don't know.
Maybe we should say, you should have a building code update.
You could have part of your recommendation to the city council be that they rec staff to address the building material side of this issue of hardening properties.
Okay, well, I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion. You second, Chris?
Yeah, yeah.
On favor? We got consensus on that?
Yeah, for the straw votes, a formal motion is not required, but it works.
Okay, we have a straw vote on that. Now, one of the things on definitions, and I want anybody to bring up definitions that has a problem, but we have, in the section that talks about how close a building can be, shade structures, et cetera, from other buildings, we talk about, if I can find exactly where it is. Oh, section seventeen point four oh point five oh. It basically says you have to be six feet, or I think it's six feet, from any buildings to a primary residence. But it doesn't say you can't have four auxiliary structures that are foot apart. So I think we need to change that to say, no structure can be more than six feet, less than six feet from another structure.
Yeah, we discussed that with the building official, and the building code addresses some of those issues.
But it's not defined that way. It says-
Well, this is where, there, there are certain areas of this code amendment that are gonna probably overlap some with the building code as far as minimum setbacks and things like that.
Well, I'll give you an example. We built Lynn Conheim's house on Malva Road. Big boy house. They wanted to have a accessory structure with little walkway in between it and the house, and they were five, four feet apart. They just wanted to be able to walk from the other and not get wet. Well, it's right next to the house, but since it was an accessory structure with a, with a thing next to it, another one, those two weren't six feet. That may not be a good example, but the way the definition is written now, you could have a house, and as long as one of the accessory structure, no accessory structure was within six feet of the house, all the accessory structures, you have up, what, to five, could be a foot apart. And those things, when those things catch on fire, six feet isn't good enough.
Well, and that's, and that's where the building code, I think, addresses, begins to, it requires a minimum setback, and I'm sorry, I don't know what that is, but then if you don't meet that minimum setback, then it addresses the materials and like Class A or whatever.
But why do we wanna define it incorrectly?
Well, I also don't wanna get into parsing the building code.
Well, no, this is a fire thing. Do you want an accessory structure three feet from another one?
Well, if you want to include as part of your recommendations, that it be, you know, six feet or whatever.
No structure should be six feet from another, less than six feet from another. I'd like to change that. Instead of the house, I'd like to say any structure.
Got it, but so then that would be in the, as you, as you referenced, seventeen point four zero zero five zero?
I believe so.
Not, not, there's nothing specific to the definitions in terms of shade structure?
Well, there's a definition, yeah, but it-
Right, yeah, we're just, to make sure that the, the substance of it is that no shade structure, accessory buildings will be within six feet of, of each other. Okay.
Can I, can I weigh in on that same point?
Let me ask this.
Can I weigh in on the same point?
No, let me finish this first. When we say buildings, we, do we mean structures or do we need buildings? Do they have roofs, don't they? And that gets into the definition of a structure, a shade structure. So I would assume that, that seventeen four oh point five oh would cover structures instead of buildings.
The setbacks address buildings specifically, and then shade structures are called out, and there's a definition that says, structure with a temporary or permanent roof or covering designed to provide shelter from the heat or glare of the sunlight.
Okay, I'd like to add to that. Or support- Or supports, plants or vines, because these are built, a lot of them are trellises for plants or vines.
John, talk to the microphones, I can hear you down here.
Oh, pull the thing out. You could build a sage structure that theoretically didn't provide shade, but it but it had wires that held up bougainvillas that were ended up being five feet thick on top of it that were for shade. So I'd just like to add to that.
We could, yeah, change the definition to include roof covering or, yeah, plants or vines.
Well, supports, because when they build it, they're certainly not going to show them to you.
I'm confused, I thought we were going through definitions, but it seems like we're going through the some of the material of the
No, that's a definition.
He's defining a shade structure
Okay.
more broadly.
Okay.
Okay, so so do you have any other, any other definitions you want to deal with?
I do, on the on that particular topic, though, I I just want to call out, the walk around for the fire department is five feet, and the plant zone, the the no plant zone around, well, is five feet around the house, and yet we have the six-foot structure thing. It would be nice if we could harmonize all those, so people in their mind could just have one figure that they understand, but we can't bring it into five feet, because that would involve another amendment to coastal with coastal right to go from six feet to five feet.
No, it's a fire department.
A five, fire department just wants five feet.
Right.
The six feet was in the municipal code already, and that got the zoning code, check Title 17, and it got pulled into the LCP when the Coastal Commission prepared it, so I don't I don't know if they
To to cut that tighter to five feet, though, that would require an amendment, right? Because it would be
It would.
Otherwise, we could
Yes, if you went from six to five, and I don't know where the six came from, to be honest, it's
Otherwise, we could just say all these
It was in the zoning code, and I don't know what the origin of that was.
The point in what I brought up earlier is apropos, and that is that I want to change to roof cover, not not building to building. And because if you have two feet between eaves, well, eaves are typically three feet, so you have two buildings next to each other, they're contiguous.
Right.
And it's senseless not to do
We've already agreed that that's we want to measure from those eve points, not from the walls.
Then you have that change.
Correct, and so then, and yeah, I apologize, I know we're on the 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 definition section, but just so we're clear, that if you look at that 17.40.05.082, it says the distance shall be measured from the outermost projection of the building, including eaves
Page 10.
Page 10, thank you. Including eaves, overhangs, and second floor balconies to the accessory building or detached shade structure. I understand your concern that that measurement needs to be with all of them, so just not to the the accessory building, but
Yeah, the other ones are different.
Right, but but does that language, does that encapsulate what it is that you're got it?
Okay, now, so you understand what he's saying?
Yeah, I do, and I agree.
It's all in there, we're just, okay.
I agree. Other other definitions, I think we we want to distinguish compost from the other categories of, oh, I'm sorry, before we go ahead, on the structures, could we put in an exception or an exemption if the structure is built over a inflammable surface like a concrete or stone or brick patio? If there's nothing under it that would burn, that would
I would object to that, because these are wind-driven fires, they're ember-driven fires, and believe me
Okay, fair enough.
My house was far enough away from flame, but it was still being pelted by fire.
Briefly on that one, Norm made a point about non-flammable shade structure with that same argument that you're making, John, where those even a metal roof would trap embers, is that a similar concern, where we just wouldn't want
Well, if you notice, if you notice on the diagrams that we got, people are stringing a canvas, you know, we have the plant material that can grow on it. I I don't see nitpicking that far to say you got a metal one, which one?
Non-flammable, I mean, the the concept, or does that introduce just embers being trapped by that shade structure adjacent to something? Should it still be five foot off?
As in how it's designed, some of them have little cupulism at the top and stuff.
Right, right.
I I I'm of the opinion that if we get too nitpicky, it won't be followed.
Right.
And just move your shade structure back a couple feet, you know, it's
Okay.
Okay.
Moving ahead.
It makes sense, but
Other definition I was going to call out, that compost should be treated differently than the other types of mulch, because it tends to retain moisture better, it's organic, it doesn't blow around as readily as the bark mulch, and maybe susceptible to different treatment, and some, as we get into the details further in here, I think compost has a slightly separate status than the other kinds of mulch.
I just want to comment on that, and that's, you can go to Usagers every Saturday and get all the free mulch you want, and it's compost mulch, and it burns.
They have, yeah, you're right, they have the shredded barky-like stuff.
Yeah, and it burns, and it's compost, so
But if you have like the soil organic, like your household stuff?
If you keep it wet. Now, I we had a situation across the street from me where a house burned down, where for 20 years, a guy took the output of 10 horses and dumped it on that lot. And so it was about, and then he let a chip, a tree company dump all their chips there for two years. So it ended up being six inches of whatever, and it's not defined in our thing, I mean, we don't have horse poop in our thing, but we couldn't put it out. It was burning four days later. Put it out, and it come up somewhere else. So mulch, it's not, it's not going to burn your house down the day of the fire usually, because it's burning slowly. I think there was an example in in this report saying that ice plant's good, ice plant's the worst thing you can have, because it burns underneath it. So again, I I think things like mulch, we we have, and I don't know why, and maybe you can answer this, Jessica, you have gravel as mulch in one of the definite, in one of the sections, and I wondered why that was in there.
That was included in the Ventura Fire Protection Standards that they changed, so the part that has the table in here, Table 1, it has zero to five
We corrected later, right? We say it's got to be non-flammable, so it's corrected later.
It's not, yeah, it we're trying to emphasize the fact that it's non-flammable.
So are we going through order in the staff report or in the resolution itself?
No, I was going to go through the the staff report orders, because they're the main things, the resolution, because we've switched it around so much, and I assume if your motion passes, we're going to have a second shot at the resolution.
Well, I had another definition I wanted to put out there, too, just before we get off that.
Is that okay?
I guess so, my my, I'm organized to do it by the resolution, so I can probably wing it.
Okay, the the other just thought is on page 10, we're talking about fences and walls, just to get to the specific here, it says wood fences are not prohibited. I would just want to introduce a concept, just like we have non-combustible materials, something like combustible materials, to say fences of combustible materials are prohibited, because I could think of like a plastic fence or something else, which is not wood, which could be very flammable.
Yeah, let's get to that one.
But definition, then, so a definition of flammable material is what I want to have added, in addition to non-flammable, right? So not just non-flammable, which is already there, but also flammable, and then they're going to say flammable fences are not permitted.
It may be that we could address that by saying something like combustible fences made of materials such such as wood, plastic, or similar.
As long as we have a definition of combustible, and and I I know there are certain types of wood which are better than some metals, you know, so it's all, it's all, again, scales and specifics.
And let's get that to where we get, because, for example, Trex is only about 10 years old. 10 years from now, it might have been something else. Non-flammable means you put a lighter on it, it won't light.
And flammable says it will, so we'll add a flammable definition, and I'm happy.
Flammable means a flame.
Flammable material, just like non-flammable.
I would suggest we go through
Do you need to vote on that?
No, we're going to get to it later.
Straw vote, and oh, you're all set? It's in?
Oh, is it in?
I thought, yeah.
Okay, do we agree?
Yeah. Okay, you're saying your definition of flammable is what?
Just so, just like we have non-combustible materials have a parallel definition, which is combustible materials, so in referencing
Okay, I suggest the combustible material is any material that cannot light at less at at 0 to 3,000
Right, I'm not worried about definition, the specific definition, it's just that we capture one and it's documented for review.
So you want to do that now or later?
Oh, just just that we we propose a combustible material definition TBD, I'm happy with that, we just that there needs to be that
I would like a combustible definition to be any element or material that can catch on fire, that can combust. How's that?
That's fine, they're they're reading, that would mirror what they have for non-combustible, so, yeah.
I moved that we patched the Oxford English Dictionary by reference.
Okay, so let's go through this. Number one, which is on page five, three of 12, this is just changing the position of the ordinances. I don't think there's anything to deal deal with there. Does anybody have any problems with that?
No.
Well, kind of going to pre number one, I just wanted to call out the all-new and updated landscaping. Do we want to challenge that and say this should include existing landscaping?
We have never, and I'll ask our attorney, we have never had a retroactive ordinance that I know of past.
Yes, we have two.
But we may have.
We have two.
Did we refer this?
The dark sky ordinance and the parking lot safety standards that we refer to as the Ballard ordinance, where existing developments had to go back and comply after the fact.
Does anybody want to have
It presents complications in enforcement and
Does anybody want to have true
They'll be charging down here with pitchforks and and torches if you do
I I I I'm just asking the question, so I mean, that's where I want to start.
I think, and I I don't disagree, I mean, we're trying to do a, and maybe it's a neighborhood by neighborhood thing, but it seems to me if we're dealing with existing stuff, it's much more effective to get people to change stuff when the neighbors get together and say, Jesus, you know, we're, let me go back, the sort of the theme of the neighborhood, at least where I live in, everybody is sort of agreed that we all have to take care of our own places so we can take care of everybody, right? I mean, and and they keep repeating that when you talk to them. So I think that gives us a chance to to hit some of the existing properties and get it done that way, because I just think if you're trying to force it, I mean, if you come up with, it's, we're going to have a problem doing that, we don't have the horses to do that.
Just briefly, if I may, the other observation is, we're going to, it was pointed out before, we're going to be putting out more messaging guided, so, I mean, I I just wanted to make sure we're all in agreement that we don't need to do that, but we need to educate more.
I think we need to do something, and I I'm not, you know, look, again, the the goal of this thing is protect the the city from burning down again, right? So but I think if we can do the new stuff now, and then maybe come back with either an educational program, or a community hot luck dinner that says us to get everybody together and talk about fires, something, all right? Because I think the communities are
I think that's the most effective way to go about it.
Are amenable to that, I mean, at least, I what I'm hearing is people are amenable to doing that and trying to make it better, and working on it on their own versus having somebody come down with a hammer and hit them.
And I'm good with that.
I want to go in the middle there and ask a question.
Can I, can I, before you go, I did, several people were talking, I did not hear what you proposed.
Just just to, do we want to, this is written to only apply to all new and updated landscaping, do we want to have it apply to all existing landscaping, so a neighbor has some protection?
My thought on that was that, no, we don't, it's not retro, except there might be to discuss, a specific case or two about like, for example, particularly flammable palm varieties that happen to be particularly close to a house, or there might be a margin, at which point you would call it a nuisance or a hazard, or something that would actually fall under some other piece of code, that this is a
Well, the fire department is supposed to police that, who knows?
Okay, then the other other observation, maybe before getting into the numbered, exceeds 2,500 square feet. I'm also thinking, kind of, as Commissioner Hill, if I'm a neighbor, and there's a very small development, but it's right really close to my structure, because I happen to maybe have a reduced setback, a grandfathered in or whatever, 2,500 square feet could be really bad for me. So again, I I'm just asking if we, does that, does that limit, is it arbitrary, should we have it, you know, I just wanted to throw it out there.
2,500 square feet comes from another ordinance we have.
Yes, it comes from the state model water efficient landscape ordinance.
So if you want
It initially was a limit of 5,000 square feet that was a trigger for new development, and the most recent, a few years ago
It's like 2012 or something?
They ratcheted it down to 2,500.
So if they do that, just so you know, Chris, if somebody comes in and wants 5,000, they come to us, basically.
No, they they just have to provide, they're subject to the ordinance.
Yeah, and the ordinance says they need a variance, right?
It 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 has to do with the amount of water that they're allowed, and so basically they they won't be allowed, they won't be approved through planning and through the city biologist if they're trying to propose something that's greater than what their what their capacity is for their property.
So I repeat my question, because that, everyone just clarified, that came from a water restriction, this is a fire restriction, so do we want to consider that 2,500 limit? It seems kind of arbitrary to me, and I don't know that that, you know, I'm not visualizing that very well, but that could be a big patch of freaky, crazy growth, it could really scare somebody as a neighbor, so that's the reason I call it out. Any any consensus there, or just move on?
Any any new development that has, well, any new development is basically going to have a landscape plan, so it'll be subject to this anyway. The 2,500 square foot trigger would occur and and get somebody in with an administrative plan review for landscaping if, and they would be subject to this, if they have that much new or modified landscaping. I guess one option would be to put this somewhere else
I don't know if there's consensus, does anyone agree with me, or should we let it stand before you consider, but anyone else think that's
Well, my opinion is, it's pretty hard to catch somebody who's doing 1,000 feet. It depends on where you cut it off, you say 20 feet if you want it, but they're not going to comply. We're not going to catch them.
Not sure.
Okay, okay, I I'm willing to let it drop, I just wanted to point it out.
Well, perhaps you could, you know, when, if we come back, you could see if it all makes sense, but I I think we'd have to change the other ordinance and do all kinds
Commissioner Marks, just to get back to your earlier comment about existing foliage on a, the fire department, at least up on the Knowles, comes up and visits the houses every year, I mean, they check them for brush clearance, they check them, so maybe what we do somewhere down the line is give the fire department the permission to settle, to put a form out there, something that sort of says, hey, we looked at this, this is something you may want to consider fixing. I think that level of coming from a professional may just give people an incentive to do something. If I were going, I mean, if if you wanted to do that, I think that's how I'd go after it.
Yeah, it depends on the, and I I have a fire station right near me, and I've talked to him a lot about this, they do come around, they used to come around every year, I'm pointing to him, now it's like every five years. They they can enter your property without permission, and they they basically write up to people and say, you got to fix this, or we'll come in and fix it, they never do come in and fix it. But as a matter of policy, they don't even think about trees, they won't even tell you to cut a tree.
They tend to think of trees as ornamental and sort of
Maybe that's because, maybe that's because we haven't asked them to at least consider that, I mean, the world has changed here in the last year, guys, so we may be able to get some more support out there if we need it. I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't want to
No, 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 and I mean, I, but, okay, so so it sounds like maybe there's consensus, not so much for a change in this code, but some communication with
Somewhere down the line, I think it's something we've got to take a look at, I don't want to do it now, but I mean, some process allows us to deal with existing
Do we want to propose something just verbally to get on the record, so we can have a follow-up item, otherwise it's going to go to vague?
Well, we don't follow up, it's got to be somebody talking to the fire department, we don't talk
Do we define what that is? So just so, just so it can be noted, and we've got it as a follow-up item? What would that look like?
That would be instructions for the city to ask the fire department to do their job, because they're already assigned to that.
How about if we go through some other items on here and come back and see, maybe that will fit in with something else?
I want to bring up one other thing on that, and this is a legal issue. We issue a, we issue a landscape plan. Day one, when they get their house done, they're supposed to follow the landscape plan. Day two, the minute they get a completion notice, they tear it all out and do something else, which is very common. The city, I suppose, can go in and say, hey, you violated your CDP. What are the legal What are the legal ramifications of that? Do we need to put anything in there saying you gotta follow your CDP or just hope they do?
I think in that case, if they put in something that's egregious, that, that code enforcement is by the neighbors, and the neighbors will say, hey, hang on, you just put in ten palm trees here, and, you know.
Well, I hate to say it, but the neighbors also have a ficus edge.
Right, I mean, you know, that, it's hard to, you know, give you a concrete answer for a hypothetical, for something as egregious as, as you articulated at day one, they put something in and then day two, I'm not sure, are we, is that a, a common occurrence? But I mean, the, the, the city would have various different code enforcement mechanisms to attempt to.
But we, we can't, the city does have the mechanism to do that, and it's their right to do that. They can't change a CDP just because they feel like putting in palm trees.
Right. They're, they're subject to the landscape plan they had approved until such time as they come back and amend it.
I have a question still on the context of retroactivity. On the resolution, page five of sixteen, I just wondered what the following projects shall be exempt from the requirements of this chapter. So my question is, what is the chapter? Because one of the things exempt is a single-family residence being rebuilt pursuant to a planning verification or administrative plan review.
Which section?
Where are you?
Yeah.
Bottom of page five of sixteen of the resolution.
What's the number there?
B seventeen fifty-three oh thirty, B one.
Okay.
Is it on page five, bottom paragraph?
It's near the bottom.
He's in the resolution.
B one, yeah. And so it's basically saying you're exempt if you're, if it's a PV or administrative plan review following destruction or damage due to natural disaster, which is.
Those are exemptions that are already in the ordinance, so any of the rebuilds would not have to comply with this.
Well, my, my, my concern would be if we're rebuilding, they should, yes, sure, they should, they get their house and get their plus ten, whatever, but on the landscape plan, let's not let them just have what they had before. Let's say, you know, do it, do it right.
That's something that the, that you could recommend. The code currently, chapter, the non-conforming structures section of the municipal code allows people to replace things that they had that were legal non-conforming. So even if it doesn't comply with today's code, that's, I mean, same way you can put your non-conforming house back, you could put your non-conforming landscaping back. That's something you could recommend to the city council if you want to have them have to come into compliance with these standards.
I think this is part of the point here is that we want, we want to say no.
There's a term you used, let me, let me speak. There's a term you used, and that's legal non-conform. To be legal non-conforming, you must have a permit.
That's right.
Okay? Ninety percent of the people who got burned out don't have a landscape plan permit.
It is def, I will tell you, it is, that's one of the challenges we have been facing with the rebuilds in this part of town because so many of the, the homes were built a long time ago, and so they, you know, they may have put in the landscape beginning in the sixties when, you know, who was reviewing landscape plans at this time, at that time. So that's definitely been a challenge, and you could make that recommendation as part of your.
I'd like to do that. I just, I mean, the people who got burnt out, you would think they would be the most receptive.
Exactly. And I suspect that a lot of people are thinking along those lines, but if you want to make that recommendation.
Why do we need a recommendation? We're, we're going to pass an ordinance, right? And they're going to review it and change it if they feel like it. It's not a recommendation. We want to put it in our ordinance.
That's what I'm saying. You can add it to the list of changes that we've been just going through.
Let's take that clause out.
Yeah.
That exemption out.
Well, we, no, we, I, I don't know that we want to take it out for everything. I mean, because this, this also, this, keep in mind this or the existing, the chapter that we're relocating to Title Seventeen now, it also gets into maximum water use allowance and all that kind of stuff, those requirements. It's not just this.
I think what we're doing right now is making a list of things that we want to make sure we cover when we go through this thing, right? So why don't we, I, I would like to make a recommendation that we consider that when we get to our final program, however, and all that's going to work. It's something we want to change and say if it's, if it's a rebuild.
Yeah, let's not bring up anything that isn't on the section we're dealing with. Okay? But I do believe when we get to number four on page five of twelve, we should put that in, that as far as landscaping goes, they must become compliant. They have to become compliant on the building codes.
One of the, sorry, one of the things you could consider is the, that exemption language, since the way this ordinance is set up, a new section has been added. If you look at page twelve of the resolution, item C is where the fire protection standards are that, that are discussed in the staff report. You could say that PV, the rebuilds after disasters are not exempt from that section C.
That's what we want to do.
Okay, as opposed to exempting them from the entire ordinance, which is what.
Though you'd still need to then put a flag back in the original clause to say, look ahead to section C here too, so that the two clauses aren't conflicting. Because that currently says the whole chapter.
Right, that's what I'm saying. You're only trying to exempt them from C, not the whole thing.
Right, okay, so we have.
Whoever's making a list of these things, could somebody make, get that on your list of things?
We're writing it down.
Okay, so now let's go back to number two. Palm trees.
Okay.
Okay, now, I have a fundamental difference with the way the staff report's written. Palm trees don't burn because they have brush at the bottom of them. They burn because the crown catches on fire and sprays sparks, and you cannot put them out, period, unless you can get higher than the palm tree and pour water down into it. I've, I've, I've been on top of a roof with a hose trying to squirt it up in the air on an eighteen-foot palm tree, because my house is only twelve feet high. It doesn't work. You can't put it out. And the problem is, it's like a big sparkler, and it goes on for hours and hours. So I think the height is way too high. And I, and we even show that in our staff report in the pictures. We show a little dinky palm tree that is supposedly a, a fire hazard. This thing's only like three feet tall.
Did you ever prefer it, John, or?
Yeah, I, I would say that it can be no higher than ten feet. And even that, let's see here, it's on.
I, I have some good comment on that, too.
Here it is. It's on page, attachment four, first page. Palm trees is fire hazards. They've got one that's less than three feet tall. Okay, and it's fire hazard. They are the absolute worst plant ever, 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 if you want to fight a fire. It can't get worse. I'd rather have fifty eucalyptus trees than one palm tree.
So why don't we just prohibit palm trees altogether?
I have no problem with that.
I mean, if they're the ones that are causing the big problem, why the hell we letting people plant them?
I, I, I wanted to say that I made a special point of watching palm trees on all the TV coverage I've watched of fires in the last weeks since this kind of, since this was going to be on our radar. And they do, they do burn from below also if they're the type that have, that catch, the way it's cut and trimmed, if they catch the embers that way, then they do generate, from their trunks, they generate literally millions of embers per minute.
But you can put those out.
But if the wind is blowing, then it's just, it's still just a torch of ember, so. But I, I agree that they're, to say eighteen feet is arbitrary, and that when you break the species down, if, I would agree to say, yeah, ban them all entirely, but if you had to put a height limit in there, it would be around ten or twelve feet, because there are, the species tend to break down into either shorter, closer to the ground, six, eight, ten feet kind of things, or the type that really do grow a lot taller. And the eighteen feet is kind of not, nothing just grows to eighteen. They either grow to ten or twelve or to thirty or forty.
Is there any reason we can't ban them?
The, one, one observation is the Guadalupe fan palm is listed as a fire resistant plant.
Doesn't matter.
Well, I'm just calling out, you know.
How tiresome.
If we strike palm in general, does that take out something which is fire resistant? You know, so fire prone palm trees?
I don't care. Is there a reason why we could not ban them?
Is this discussed as a racist?
It was, it was originally proposed to ban them, prohibit palm trees entirely, and they felt that that was too restrictive, and there was discussion about the height, and the subcommittee members suggested the eighteen feet.
I was there because they basically took a guess. And I think, you know, since they're a committee, they don't have, they, the council can add them back in, but.
Yeah, John, this is where I'd like to see, and somebody who is a botanist, that understands this stuff, because, look, if, if you say you can't put them out, Craig is telling us that if they, once they light up in the base, the base becomes a sparkler, okay? And you say, well, you can put the sparkle out. You can't if somebody's there to try to put it out. If nobody's there, this thing's going to spread embers all over the place. Why would you want that to happen? I just, I mean, I'm.
I mean, both ways, the top and the bottom.
I just, why would we want that to happen? I'm just saying, if, if the tree is that risky, don't put it in.
I'd propose we add language saying, you know, risk, no, no longer allow non-fire resistant palm trees.
I would say no palm trees.
Well, just because there are classes of palms which are fire resistant.
No, there aren't. Where's the official? On that table. It may not be on another table.
Everything burns.
So you're going to have to say on this particular table, that particular tree. And to me, that's getting
Let's, let's do this.
I hear you, I hear you.
We could do this, you could, we could right now say, let's ban them, pending, we get some expert in here that says, here's how you can do it.
I'm good with that.
You can reconsider it, but right now, let's get them off the books because they're dangerous.
Do we have a consensus on that?
Yeah, we got a consensus, everybody, yes?
Yeah, and also, this would, this would be the place to specify what I sort of threw out there before, that if there's anything that's worth straight up prohibition of existing things, retroactive, it would be those palm trees. Obviously, you can't tell everybody they have to take out all their palm trees everywhere, but to just say, you know, maybe with the, if there are any within five feet of a house, that that's like a double hazard.
I think, I think we've already decided we can't go retroactive.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of pitchforks at Malibu, and that's one that, you know, somebody's going to have their palm tree that their dog died under or something. I mean, it's just, we, we, we have trouble with code enforcement to begin with, and then to have somebody sic somebody on somebody else for their palm tree?
Yeah, good point.
I don't, I don't think it's going to happen. I mean, unless you guys.
We say palm trees are out. Are we good?
Yeah, now we're off to flammable material within five feet of a structure. Now, the five feet, I assume, came from the fire department walk around. And it didn't?
No. That's, that's a common one that's come from people like Clark Stevens and Marty Witter, and there's a whole, like, culture of people who have discovered, they have all the research. We have some of it that we haven't been able to read yet, that talks about how really, what, what saves houses is what's in the immediate zone right around the house, that most of the fires that happen, happen because things blow in the vents, or they get in the gutters, or, you know, trapped under the eaves. And so that five feet comes from that culture, that sort of scientific discipline that they, they figured out that that's the, I mean, it may be arbitrary in the end, but it's, they're not citing the fire department.
I think it's all interconnected. The sources that I read, one of them was from the National Fire Protection Association. They all reference the five feet. It's all the idea of protecting the space or making it non-combustible space that firefighters can get to, to put the fire out, and also to reduce the spread of the fires onto the structures.
But I, I want to point out what this guy that wrote us today said. And that, it's important. He talks about, and we'll get this on fences and trees and hedges, but he talks about the cumulative effect of having a hedge next to something is a lot more than having a bush. I forgot, there's a term for it in here. So maybe we can get through this when we get on fences, but I know, I know this is for sure, because we tried it on a house. If there's a a flammable hedge, five feet from a house, no chance any fireman or anybody else is going to go in there once it catches on fire, period.
Doesn't this prohibit that?
You die immediately.
John, doesn't this prohibit that?
If it was, was six feet away from the house, which is the case you're saying, yeah.
I think it depends on the size and how many, but a hedge, and, and I don't know whether we get this in, under
Fences, yeah.
Fences or not, but we can't create a position where somebody's trapped in that five feet.
I have another question. I got to throw out something, talking to Commissioner Hill. When we walked that property where there was the fluff erosion, and the existing structure was, I think, three feet from the neighboring property, there's nothing in this language that would limit the neighboring property that didn't have the hill slippage from putting a hedge, you know, three feet from that other house next to them, because they're ten feet from their own house. You know, just, just to kind of talk about an example. Do we want to have anything in this language not only talk about to your own structure, but to any other neighboring structure, or is that contemplated in here? So when we say five feet from a structure, does that only focus on the applicant's structure or a neighboring property's structure?
It just says within structure.
The intent is that it's for neighboring properties as well. We would look at them just as we look at confined animal spaces, barns and whatnot. We make sure that that type of a structure, for health reasons obviously, is not within fifty feet of any of the neighboring property structures as well.
So that kind of addresses your question a bit about, you know, that, that example of the neighboring house getting burned by the hedge, but the five feet is still your very good question.
Well, on a large property, theoretically, your house isn't right up against the line. Sometimes it is, like that one on the cliff we looked at that was what, ten feet from a national park, with eight foot chaparral. Some big, big properties don't have that problem, because you're not going to put your house right next to your, you know, right on the line. I guess unless there's a cliff in front of you. It happens. But yes, we have to watch the neighbor, because they, they get burned down too. I mean, especially the older houses. We have a limit, do we have a limit on how high these things can be when they're near a house?
Are we talking about hedges now, or?
We're talking about.
Which one are we on, John?
We're on, we're on, uh, number three.
Number three, it's the bushes, trees and mulch materials.
They have the potential to go over eighteen feet. Do we want a row of trees next to a house that's eighteen feet high with only five feet from the house?
One thing that Radke was talking about, if I can distill it, was that the radiant heat of burning things is there's an exponential factor when you have a row of things like the hedge you're talking about, that there's more, the radiant heat is much higher than if you have them spread out in a sparse array than, so, I mean, that might be something to say.
Yeah, I, I did, I called my neighbor. He said he was fighting the fire on the morning, and it was something in, maybe in the sixties, and a line of eucalyptus lit up a hundred yards from him, and it melted his goggles, because there was so, such a problem with that cluster. So I agree, like, clustered growth is, is different than a couple, than a, a lonely tree. So I, I, I don't know if this is the right place to talk about it, but that clustering concept, I, I agree with Commissioner Hill.
Within that section, Zone B, it starts to talk about, and Ventura did it a little bit differently, so you could alter this, but it talks about limiting the non-continuous use of flammable materials. They had patches, so it'd be square foot, but we could also do something in terms of linear foot, not more than, you know, twenty linear feet.
But that was, that was about mulch, right? That wasn't about.
Theirs was about mulch, but ours is kind of including the brushes and, and shrubs and, and trees in it too.
And you're, I mean, in the stuff we got, I haven't, we're skimming through it, there's a couple of places where they talk about exactly that, you know, you, if you've got that line of stuff, you're more likely to get toasted.
I feel like we're talking about several things at once, but on the, the notion of the patching areas, well, I feel like on the one hand, you could say with trees, even with, in that thirty to a hundred foot zone, that you could put a limit on how closely trees could be spaced, like, just what sprung to mind was no closer than, no closer distance than the height of the taller of the two trees. So if the tree is. So if the tree is, could grow to twenty foot max, then you would not allow a tree within twenty feet.
Of the drip line of each tree also? So you'd have to have twenty foot space by between leaves? I mean, that's another aspect.
That's another thing to consider. But so that, that's sort of one thing, we can come back to that in a moment. Then the other is the patches of mulch and how the lower stuff is growing. It seemed to me that that makes some sense, although to say twenty by twenty seemed odd, because you might want to do a different arrangement. And it seemed like in the Zerasis meeting, we had a notion that the gaps between the patches needed to be bigger than five feet, that it was maybe like fifteen or twenty feet between patches.
You're talking about mulch?
I'm talking about mulched growth areas that they, that five feet seem too close together.
Well, I, I, mulch will burn as mulch. If it's only mulch, you have no problem, because it's burning slowly. When you have, the biggest problem is three to four feet, because the fire roars through that. And I was down the gully with a hose, and, and some of the trees that had the lower branches were gone. They were up like five or six feet up. They didn't catch on fire. So ones that had the ones hanging on the ground are lower. If you lollypopped everything, the fire would go through pretty quickly, and you wouldn't have a big problem. But so, I don't have a problem with mulch, but I have a problem with plants. And you got a bunch of, say, pampas grass around your house. It's all next to each other, you've got a huge problem. So that's kind of hard to define, but we are talking in, in general, whenever we talk about something, talking about drip line, or some version of that. And, and that gives enough to keep them from going from tree to tree, unless you have a big wind. And then you're toast anyway with trees.
By similar argument, I, I understand, and this is where the expert would help, that sometimes having that kind of line of trees can absorb the onslaught of ember. So I mean, I, I'm...
Well, there's certain trees, like he recommends oak trees, having levels of oak trees, okay? Now, there's a lot of other things that are involved in that too. For example, we used to require firewalls. I don't know where that dropped away. When you're on a major slope and you don't have a firewall, it's gonna come right up underneath your house and you're toast. Where we used to require firewalls, you know, six foot walls, you know, halfway down the slope or something, to break, break the rush up. That's something we can talk about later, but that's, that's a building thing.
You know, let me, I mean, we try and get real nitpicky with this stuff. It's gonna get more and more difficult, because we can't even define it, okay? And is it not better to sort of come up with some general guidelines? Because they have to get a landscape plan approved by some biologist, right? It's gotta be, if, if that person had a set of guidelines that said, you know, we don't want to see a continuous line of trees, or something like that, that gives them some stuff, as opposed to us trying to say, you gotta be, you know, three and a half feet. I'm, I'm just saying, I'm trying to figure out how to get through this thing in, in a way that
Well, I think you take...
People can understand it, we're not...
I think you take Table One, and convert it from mulch to plants, and come up with a rational thing that say, how big should a plant be, five feet from your house? I don't think you want a, an acacia tree or something, five feet from your house.
Let, let me call a couple concepts that are coming to mind also. Do we want to distinguish highly flammable materials, flat versus slope? I mean, that seems like something else which might be relevant right here. And then also, are there any types of mulch we should just say, no more shredded tires, because they burn so much worse or something? I mean, those are a couple, because the...
People are using shredded tires?
Sorry?
People are using shredded tires?
Uh, that was one of the flammable materials. When you look at the study, it was the most flammable, even worse than pine needles, in terms of, I think, the size of flame and the heat generated. So, you know, maybe we just eliminate those, and pine, you know, some of the obvious ones, we could say, don't use those. And then the other one is, should we treat slope different than flat? Because how the fire travels, you know, maybe we have, if you're on slope, you can't have but twenty feet apart versus flat ten, something.
Well, then you have to define four to one, three to one.
Agreed, agreed, but I mean, without that, you know, if, if this is interpreted, and, oh yeah, in my mind, it worked on a flat slope, and then all of a sudden, but they applied it on, on grade like this, the rules are completely different. Travels, fire travels nineteen times faster up than down slopes. So, you know, those kind of things, I think we have to consider at least.
There are just too many things on the table right now.
Well, you gotta remember...
One thing about the mulch that's pretty clear that we could probably pin down right now, the Ventura says excluding wood chips, no wood chips. That would be an easy enough to say, right?
No, no shredded tires. I mean, I think, you know, some of the obvious ones, yeah.
Do we have consensus on wood chips and shredded tires?
I'm in, I'm in.
Yep.
Now, but I think our consensus should be that we should come up with a Table One, for, like mulch, except it's for plants.
I, I agree with you.
And the closer you get to the house, the, the smaller the plant is.
I agree with you in principle, but I feel like we, that could take us eight hours to sort of count.
No, no, well, let's staff them up with a rational reason.
And I think it, it may be something to address in like a next phase of this ordinance. It also, it would make sense to, I mean, that starts to get into what the fire department reviews and fuel modification plans. So we would want to make sure that, you know, we weren't doing anything that contradicts what they already do.
Now, when you mentioned shredded tires, how about fake grass? Fake grass is put on chopped up tennis shoes.
Also, keep in mind that, at least in Zone B, it says that you can use limited non-continuous use of organic mulch. And then it defines that underneath the table, and it's compostable material limited to landscape waste and crop reduction byproducts consisting of leaves, yards, yard trimmings, wood waste, branches and stumps, and whole plants slash trees that have been mechanically reduced in size and have been composted prior to application. So that would not include anything non-organic, like fake grass, or... You could argue that a tire is rubber, and rubber is organic, but that's not...
Would that be considered mulch, or would it be considered fake grass?
Well, if it's not an organic material, that's...
No, but I mean, when you looked at, when the application come, and they're gonna say, I'm gonna have ten thousand square feet of fake, fake grass. Allow that or not?
We could just add that in, mulch or...
I, I think so.
Fake synthetic materials.
Now, the other thing is, how thick can it be? Because that's the key.
How thick can what be?
The mulch. If you get over about...
That's described in other parts of this ordinance, how thick mulch is, the application of mulch. And that's, again, another thing that, while we would love to enforce every single thing about this, it's unlikely that code enforcement's gonna go measure the depth of mulch.
I'll just point out on that one, though, that one place says it should be no greater than two inches, and somewhere else it says no less than three inches.
That's something that could be highlighted too on the webpage that we're talking about. As Bonnie says, it's almost impossible for anybody to be out there enforcing it, but these are all really great suggestions that property owners should have a link to on the webpage.
And I would suggest also, and as we're talking about the mulch and how far from the house, that, and maybe we'll talk about the, these areas that it's allowed, whether it's twenty by twenty, or, and how many feet they need to be separated. But I think that that would applies all the way out to the hundred foot, that we're saying no wood chips allowed, even out to a hundred feet, because they blow around. There's, there's no way to distinguish between out to thirty or out to a hundred in that regard. And then I would also say, beyond a hundred feet, no mulch whatsoever, because those are supposed to be natives at that point, which don't need mulch.
Well, that's the way it is now, right? At a hundred feet, you can't have non-native stuff.
That's correct.
So, but there's somewhere there was talking about what kind of mulch you could put beyond a hundred feet, that there should be no mulch.
There may still be people out there mulching natives, for whatever reason, but Commissioner Maz is correct, after a hundred feet, you're supposed to be just using natives.
Right, right. So, well, so I guess my main point is not, is to expand the prohibition on wood chips all the way out to the hundred foot limit. But is that, when we said no wood chips, was that kind of what we were thinking, or?
I was thinking just eliminate that type of mulching material, period, for any application.
Period, right?
Yeah.
All the people, no, no, a lot of the people whose houses burned down that I know came from wood chips catching fire and staying there two days. So eliminating that seems to make sense.
Okay, so we done with mulch?
The, the only thing I want to call out about Section Three is that, I mean, we stumbled on it in this conversation. There's a lot to try to cover in this one section. I mean, between, you're, you're covering, you kind of start from a mulch concept, but we're trying to apply it to trees, conceptually, it's supposed to cover bushes. It just feels like this needs to really be either blown out, or just say, there is, you have to follow fire code X, and, and, you know, require that that visit has to happen. I, I don't know if we can unpack all this.
You know, it's, and, and I, and I don't know the answer either, but I mean, I'm thinking of, sort of saying, I got a set of rules here that say, you know, you can't have mulch within a hundred yards, you can't have a line of bushes. And it's sort of, with those kind of rules, that they're applied when the landscape plan is looked at, as opposed to trying to sit down and say, you know, it's five feet, or it's seven feet, whatever heck it is. I think if, if we can come up with somewhere general rules that the landscape person reviewing it can use, that may allow us to get there in the short run. Because I, you're right, we're gonna get buried in this thing.
And, and I'm still concerned about slope. These rules could be totally different on slope. I think it's, it almost has to come down to fire visiting, you know, fire giving that foot, feet on the ground, you know, they're looking, you're right at the top of a very steep slope, you need something to block it there, you know?
Okay, well, what I would suggest is, we have consensus, is there's another section added that analyzes fire problems with slopes.
I would agree with that, because, and in that section, now, I feel like we're getting a little bit ahead, but I wanted to point out that in some cases, certain things like sumac are the absolute best thing for erosion control, sort of putting in a retaining wall, and, you know, that, that root structure goes deep. And so you might want to say, yeah, you could allow sumacs thirty feet from a house on the up slope side, but on the down slope side, where you might really need it, you could say, yeah, you could have it within thirty feet of the house, but you, but you need to keep the tops of it trimmed to eighteen inches.
I don't know if you ever see a sumac blow up, but...
Well, I have, and that's why I'm saying...
Thirty feet from it.
And that's why I'm saying, you know, you, on the down slope side, you could say, yeah, you can have it in there for the help that the root growth gives you, but those tops need to be no more than eighteen inches.
You gotta remember that in most cases, we're dealing with bigger properties when you're talking about things like that. And they are under the fire suppression rules of the fire department, and you can't touch a sumac. Okay? You can't go in and whack a sumac just because you want to, after a certain number of feet, because it's a native plant.
Well, in, in my case, I, I thought of this, because this is my house, where I have a steep down slope, and at a certain point, it drops off more precipitously. So it's kind of the slope, and then the cliff below that. And the fire department says, yes, you should keep the sumac and the lemonade berry and all that stuff that's kind of along the edge of that precipitous thing, because that's what's holding the top of that front edge together, and keeping it from moving back towards the house. So, I don't know, just...
No, and that may be wise, but we cannot change the Zone A, B and C. It's, it would be a huge, wouldn't Connie be a, Bonnie be a huge deal?
That's what the fire department tells me to do.
No, I know, but I'm talking about the LCP. To change that would be major, wouldn't it?
To change?
The zones of clearance in Esha.
Well, the Esha clearance are, well, the fuel modification zones are set by the fire department and the fire code.
They're not in the LCP?
No, they're not in the LCP. The LC, that's why we have variances periodically when a new project can't avoid their fuel modification encroaching into an Esha. Zone C requires the least intrusive measures of fuel mod, you know, it's just thinning and trimming of dead branches and things like that, as opposed to some of the other zones that are more intensive. But that's, yeah, new structures are supposed to be located at least two hundred feet from Esha, so that they can stay out of Esha.
Yeah, in the LCP.
But, so backing up on to the track, we were talking about maybe a separate section on slope stuff, that would be both the mulchy stuff and/or some component about erosion control.
You could add a recommendation that something in a future phase address fire spread on slopes.
Yeah, or, or, and then we may have a mitigation measure. If you're on a slope of X percent, you can mitigate some of our clearance rules and stuff by firewalls. If you could write that in this code.
The LCP already mentions that. So that, that is still a measure that's available if anybody wants to put a firewall in.
Okay. Hasn't come up in years, but whatever, okay. So, we're now on...
Four, right?
Four, which is the limitation on height on trees. Now, I assume, just to be sure, this is utility lines. If the utilities are undergrounded, boom, right? This is only if there's wires.
This is overhead utility lines.
Yeah, that's it. People with underground on it, Malibu West doesn't have to care. Okay? Is there a reason why we need to get more restrictive than SCE? Because the city's not gonna cut them, SAE's not gonna cut them.
No, you know what, the, the, go, go ahead.
Sorry, this is, this is talking about new tree planting associated with a new or altered landscape plan. This isn't talking about the city doing any of Edison's vegetation maintenance, or, you know, getting involved with anything like that. This is trying to help property owners avoid the conflicts that arise when somebody plants a tree with a really big mature height underneath a power line.
So this, this here, the CPUC has a certain requirement that's, you know, four feet, where then Edison, with CPUC's blessing, said, well, let's extend that to be, to twelve feet, just to err on the side of safety. And so the Edison rules are designed now to err on the side of caution. And then we have the staff on top of that saying, let's err even more on the side of caution. And my point would be that two errors don't make a right. And that maybe at worst, at most, we want to accept the Edison as is, and maybe add that if you're within ten feet, that you would keep it to a maximum of eighteen feet, rather than the twenty-five that they posted at twenty foot distance, because that would allow you to put in, like, a fruit tree or an avocado tree or something that, you know, wouldn't necessarily be a threat to the line.
And I, I'm assuming here, again, we're talking about drip line instead of trunk. And that takes it back much more than Edison, because they're talking branch. So if we kept Edison's rule and talked about drip line, then we're being more conservative, because the branch wouldn't grow four feet from the line, even in maturity.
That makes sense. I mean, I guess my wonder is whether the Edison is even too restrictive.
I'm not sure, why are we screwing around with Edison's rules? If they're, they're, they're supposed to be the experts in this thing, right?
Well, they're the ones that's liable.
Well, they have their own interests, so, I don't know.
They gotta pay three hundred and sixty million dollars if they screw up, we don't.
They just lose their houses.
So I think Edison's rules, as long as we put something in there that says, this is drip line, we don't have a problem. So if we use Edison's rule and say it's drip line, we're being more conservative than Edison.
Yeah, my take in this case would be to make an exception to the, our sort of new drip line standard, and say, no, let's just make this about tree trunk centers.
Well, if you put a tree, even twelve feet from a line, and it's gonna be fifty feet high, it's gonna hit the line.
That's, that wouldn't be, so they're saying, their standard is, within twenty-five foot distance, you can plant something that's twenty-five...
Who's standard?
Edison.
Oh, okay.
Twenty-five feet height max. And that, I mean, that already sounds sort of restrictive to me, if all they need for clearance is four feet or twelve feet, whatever the standard is. And I would say, well, you know, then maybe you could also, they're saying twenty feet. Say, well, within ten feet, you should be able to plant something a little lower, like a fruit tree or an avocado.
I think that's already incorporated in, so zero to twenty feet you can have. They're saying, zero to twenty feet, you can have something up to twenty-five feet tall.
Oh, from zero to twenty.
So that would include any avocado or a fruit tree.
Up to twenty-five. That makes sense to just leave it and do it... That makes sense to just leave it and, and do it for that particular bit of code, just on center, not drip line. Because if you do drip line, then some, uh, I don't know, somebody in the correspondence pointed out, maybe it was a phone call. You know, if you have the, these widths too high, if you have power poles at the front or the backside of a property, then you don't have enough room between the house and the property boundary to put any tree at all. In, in most cases.
And we want trees.
I would second Commissioner Hill's recommendation.
I think that is good.
I, I have a quick clarification. When we talk power lines, is that all power lines, uh, there's that only, um, unshielded, shielded? Is there any distinction in what either we or Edison considers here?
We weren't making a distinction because it'd be difficult in planning to know whether or not, when these plans came in, the surveys, whether these are shielded power lines or unshielded power lines.
The guys that I talked to that were putting in the lines, so they're doing all shielded from all of everything.
Maybe you could put some language that's just says, assuming these are unshielded lines.
I, I, I'm, I'm okay now, I just wanted to.
I never want to say assuming.
Um, uh, the other, the other.
True.
Observation then is that if somebody wants to have more trees on their property, they can't force the community to underground the, the, kind of the currently unshielded kind of main line that goes down the main road. But on your own property, if they want to have more trees, they'd have to underground on their own property to not have these limitations. I mean, just an obvious observation, right?
You could do that any day of the week.
Exactly.
It's about four thousand a foot.
Right, so, but that, that is kind of implied by what's written here, correct?
I'll, I'll add, um, overhead utility lines to the, the ordinance once, once we get to that point.
Okay.
So we're talking using, using Edison's rules and not using the drip line.
Right.
Use Edison's rules, yeah, yeah.
I wonder even if the Edison rules are too restrictive because they're.
We could, could.
Well, we can't change their rules.
We couldn't force them to do something else.
It's their easement. And I don't know how they can tell us where to plant a tree.
Yeah, the problem is with their, and we, we went through all this before, is that CPUC has certain requirements, i.e. the four foot from the power line, that Edison then translated into sort of a recommendation of twelve feet from the power line. But, um, that's flexible, that's not really a hard.
No, 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 and that's true. And, and when they did buy trees, I said, are you going to do twelve feet? And they go, ah, no, 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 no problem.
Same with my place, I just.
So they're, they're, they're really our four feet, so.
And that's why I feel like we don't need to.
We're talking about planting new trees. By the time those trees grow up, hopefully Edison will have undergrounded all these damn lines, right?
Good luck.
All I'm saying, look, I mean, we've got it down the road, they're going to continue to get this pressure.
Steve, the, 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 the pole that burned down Paradise was a hundred years old.
The what?
The pole that burned down Paradise.
I understand, John.
Hopefully they'll get to it.
Hopefully times have changed, everybody's getting a little smarter, so. So I'm going with Craig Hill's recommendation.
I, I would be in favor of something slightly less, uh, extreme as Ed- than Edison's.
I, I.
I don't know how we do that.
Yeah, we couldn't get away with it. I mean, they have, they're, they just trump us.
Well, this is what the tree you plant, and then they have, then they have a different guideline where they would come back in to trim. And they would say, oh, this tree happens to be slightly a little bit close, we're going to trim two feet off this one branch this year.
Saying we allow to plant closer and then they would trim it and deal with it later.
Yeah, but we don't, obviously, we don't want it so close that when they come to trim it, they trim off a whole, like half the tree.
That, that's the whole point of this is to make sure that the trees get planted in a place where they don't have to be interfered with in order to be mature and natural.
So you're saying the, the implicit assumption is that they should, we should, they be, they should be in a place where they require no trimming ever?
They don't require massive trimming to alter the tree like you're saying.
Yes, we don't want to put them in a place where we know, you can easily foresee that there's going to be a problem and they're all going to have to be topped, or you're going to have to whack off one whole half of it, or that's, it's just trying to avoid a future.
Yeah, I think the Edison numbers here that still seem pretty conservative, it seems like we could go slightly closer.
What are you considering, the Edison numbers?
Well, they're, when they say.
The real number is four, right?
No, that's, that's a, that's the maintenance of the vegetation when it's matured. This is talking about where you plant the tree.
Yeah, but I'm trying to figure out where you can plant a tree.
Maybe that's okay.
Or it won't come within four feet of the line.
And it's true, if it's, if, if it goes.
Depends on the type of tree it is. I mean, that's, it's all part of a lot of, you know, there's a lot of moving parts here, so.
And as Jessica said, if it's, if the first category is actually zero to twenty, then a twenty-five foot high max tree, that does seem reasonable by their standard.
I, I'd be good leaving it, and I mean, they've thought this through long, better than we'll ever, I would assume.
Well, but my, my only thought is they're thinking it through is about their own liability. It's not about any other factor at all.
Significant factor. Okay, so, so we're going to let it lie with Edison?
Or Craig, do you want to propose something?
You want to change what is in the staff recommendation?
No?
Yes, to the Edison, so the staff.
So, okay, so match the Edison distances, um, measured based on the trunks on center, not from the drip line?
Yeah. On the, on the rationale that they were already airing on the side of caution, we don't need to do a double.
Now, do we want to, I don't know, this gets complicated. You know, like sycamores grow laterally quite thirty, forty feet sometimes. But I, I guess if somebody's stupid enough to plant a sycamore, uh, they could never be trimmed.
Where you plant, where you plant it is related to what is the maximum growth height. So, you know, a sycamore that gets above sixty feet, you wouldn't even be talking about planting in these areas.
Right.
Yeah, worry about that, that'll be a hundred years from now. Okay, so is that a consensus?
Yes.
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 Okay, now, we're off to highly flammable trees. And I don't know how we pick this out, but there's a table in here. It's table. Table two on the Santa Monica C U P P, which is attachment eight. And they cherry picked some trees out of there. There's all kinds of other stuff. And I, I think we should, I think we should adopt the whole table.
Where's the table?
It's, it's on, it's on attachment eight, and it's the third page. The first page says public draft fire resistant trees. And then, then, uh, that goes on for two pages. And then the other one says restricted plant list, plants to avoid. And this is done by somebody who's supposedly knows what they're doing. And all we did was somebody decided to pick five of them. I don't see why we would want to say it's, it's okay to put in, uh, myoporum, for example, or Canary Island date palm or castor bean, which is just one of the worst. Castor beans is what they make castor oil out of, they explode.
Well, so this, in this list, these are plants to be avoided within thirty feet of structures. And then the list you're talking about in attachment eight is the list of things that are recommended because they are fire resistant?
No, no, I'm talking about the ones that aren't fire resistant.
Table two.
Table two.
Oh, 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 gotcha, sorry.
So I don't know why we would want to say you can plant those. If you can't plant a tree of heaven, why should you plant an oleander?
I, I, part, I guess my, part of my thinking is that we could really micro manage species by species. And without the expert here that we're, the hypothetical, it, it's, I think what Zerasis was saying was, let's just focus on the ones that are just clearly inarguably really bad. And these other things to recognize that everything burns. And at a certain point, there's, it's not easy to, to, to say one's slightly better than another. Like, for example, you just mentioned myoporum. I have myoporum on my property that have survived through four fires now that they're just there and they don't burn. So I'm not, and I wouldn't go so far as to say that they're good and you should plant them.
I walk out my front door and there's a whole row of toasted myoporums.
And they, they're toasted, well, so.
What I'm saying is, I'd rather have an expert rather than somebody.
Yeah.
Pick it out of their, whatever, at a meeting that lasts an hour and a half. I think we want to have staff come back with comments from experts.
Another layer.
This is an expert list.
Right, another layer to that, that's, that's incorporated in here to some extent at least, is what are natives? What are non-natives and what are invasive non-natives, which is sort of.
Remember invasive, all that stuff has nothing to do with fires.
Well, like, I'm just looking on this.
Different section.
I look, looking right on this list that you called out, there's fountain grass, the, the peneidum, and that's absolutely one of the worst things.
Ban.
I know, that's what I'm saying, but.
So all I'm saying, all I'm trying to say is, we had five or six amateurs pick five plants off a list.
These are actually not, I don't know who you think the amateurs are, but, you know, these were suggested by the senior ecologist and.
He's saying it's a racist, that the people in Zerasis were amateurs.
But he's saying he came from, this comes from a list of people who know what the hell they're talking about.
Yes, we did get some expert input. I don't know, I wasn't, I wasn't at this racist meeting, sorry about that, but, um, I don't know if the list came from them, but we got input from expert people as well.
My suggestion would be that, look, we, we keep these five or six, whatever the heck they are there. And then, you know, when, when people are building the house, there's some component of their, we give to the architect that says, here are the five plants you want to keep away from. Plus, here's, you know, we live in a, in an area that's going to burn again. So here's a list of additional plants that you may want to consider not putting in and let them, because.
Yeah, but Steve, our problem is not with, with architects that know what they're doing. Our problem was architects that come from, well, one of them came from London, okay? Different mindset, different knowledge.
Well, we had a play of them in the movies of the fire coming over the hill.
What I'm saying is, I'd like to, I think we're going to go at the end and say, continue this item, come back with comments from experts. And, and here we have a list that is comments from experts that experts can go over. For example, some of these we've already banned, there's a bunch of palm trees on here. But I don't want to say people should have pampas grass in their front yard.
No.
You know, I don't think people should have castor beans in their yard. You'd have to be out of your mind to do that.
Well, and as somebody mentioned already, invasives are not, they're already prohibited, just based on our regular LCP language.
No, what I'm saying is, this is the only list I could find in here. I'm granted these comments probably have lists in there. Uh, that somebody said, don't even think about having these plants.
John, what would you like, John, what would you like to do?
I'd like to say, instead of those five trees, have table two restricted plants, plants to be avoided. And I have it to be this list. And then when we come back, we could have some experts say, well, you know, you're wrong, it should be this list. But it, but just to ban five trees.
So what you're trying to do is say, for, for future consideration, we can, should include that list in the, the thing when it comes back? Something we can review with an expert, see what should or shouldn't be.
Right, and what I'm saying is, this is the closest we can come to now. It's done by an expert. Uh, and if we just say these five trees.
John, I, I, let's, if we want to have an expert review for us, let's do that.
Okay, we got consensus on that?
I, I'm good with going with that list. I, I'm, I've been struggling with the thirty feet, but I want to close this first, so I'm good with consensus on that.
Yeah.
Okay, you know which, you know which list I'm talking about, okay.
So the other thing, the couple of things that came up when I was looking at this, again, thirty feet, you know, with the wind strength and everything, I, I don't know. I, it just seems like we got to put it somewhere, I, I don't know if we need to go farther, all of a sudden you can't plant any trees. So I, I'm, I'm a little bit torn on that, as, as all say, don't really have a, a change.
Well, I'm sorry, more specific, thirty feet with regard to what specifically now?
This, this section is thirty feet from a house.
Prohibit highly flammable trees.
And I think you're totally right, it should be much more than that.
I would think, the other bit is just, we covered it before, um, clusters of these trees at any distance, you know, three hundred, uh, three hundred feet. And it raised the temperature sixty to eighty degrees, so.
I, I, that's, that's right, that's good.
That goes back to my comment about maybe specifying the on-center distances between any two trees to say that it's the.
Or of the prohibited trees, because I'm just thinking out loud, like, if you had, you know, good tree, bad tree, good tree, good tree, bad tree, I don't think the cumulative effect would be as bad as if you have two or three bad trees all near each other. And they may, they, like theoretically a palm and a, and a eucalyptus and a pine, that's bad. But if you had like, you know, even theoretically a palm and an oak, you know, walnut or something, I don't think that combination would be as bad. It is where my head is on.
Well, how far is it to the back of the room, would you guess? Seventy-five feet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I would be happy making it seventy-five feet. That's close enough to me to have a eucalyptus and a pine and a cypress and a cedar, that's close enough to my house.
Would not a cluster though?
No, no, I mean clustering, yes, include the clustering language, make this seventy-five feet. And then I want to add one other thing, and that's.
Was the eucalyptus on that band?
Was it on the band?
Oh, on the other.
Was, because I, I wanted to make a comment about that specifically, because eucalyptus, they're really, they're seven hundred and fifty-ish species, and they're really different. And I, I'm plugged into what's been going on to, in Australia lately with the, they've had massive fires, they're just, just as a point of interest, they, in the last two weeks, they've had two, two point two million acres burned in just two states, which is like eleven Woolsey fires. And there, there's been a big debate going on right now, politicized thing about, it was a huge deal that they had a crown fire with some eucalyptus. And it, because there was growth underneath it that led to the crown fire. And it was, people were shocked, what, the crowns of the eucalyptus are burning? And it became a whole political thing about the right wing people were saying, no, there's these greens on the city councils that are, that haven't allowed them to cut out the, do the underbrush clearing that we would normally do. And so that's why we had the crown fire and every, but, but the point being that they were really surprised that they had crown fires at all. So I guess how, my take on it is if, if, if they can be maintained, then they're okay.
There is no possible way we can limit, we can legis- legislate maintenance.
Maintenance.
Period. I, I've lived in Malibu a while.
Code enforcement violation, no?
Good luck.
Yeah.
You're going to go out and say, you didn't cut your tree?
This section is talking about not planting the gum tree species.
But there's plenty of, plenty of, uh, yuks that'll burn other than gum. Now, this one says gum tree.
All, all yuks are gums, it's synonymous.
So one thing that we did propose at Zerasis, if you remember too, was, uh, understanding the sensitivity with eucalyptus and the monarch populations and the issues of that. We said we could add some sort of provision in there that if it was some sort of, um, habitat mitigation for the monarchs, it could be proposed differently. Possibly come as a CDP.
I wrote somewhere here, I wrote the language that I, I think would be, um, would work, let me find it. Yeah, um.
Well, I mean, I think the question would be, how far in the house should it be?
Well, let me, let me read this, we, we want to cover eucalyptus habitat for monarchs because they're in deep trouble. And so, uh, eucaly- and have a subsection that says, eucalyptuses are allowed in locations thirty feet from structures. Uh, and certified by city biologists as potential monarch habitat zone. So you can't just go out in the middle of a field and plunk a eucalyptus tree. They tend to be in gullies and places where the, and where the monarchs live.
You want them to be more than thirty feet or they're okay within thirty?
Thirty feet and beyond.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Chris is going to leave for a second, then we're going to take a break.
That's what it said, that's what we.
Yeah, are we going to take a break right now?
I want to finish this one.
Got it. We just lost Commissioner Marks.
What?
We just lost Commissioner.
Because he has to pee.
I understand, but do, do we?
The minute we finish this one conversation, which should take a minute or two, we're going to take a break, but he was in a hurry.
Okay, so it's already written into the staff report, that's the thirty foot. For, and they said for the five, uh, bad species, and we're saying that we're going to take that thirty foot and apply it to the, the whole list of bad species.
Pat, can I ask you a question? To be brief, because we're going to.
I'm sorry, what, John?
Did you hear my language?
No, I didn't hear you.
The language to be proposed are, eucalyptus are allowed beyond thirty feet from a house if a, if a city biologist identifies the location as a potential monarch habitat zone.
Are you saying that, I mean, if, if a structure is closer to a monarch habitat,
You can't.
Closer than thirty feet, you can't restore the habitat? Is that what you're saying?
We're not taking out any trees. This is a landscape plan. You can't propose to put a, a eucalyptus within thirty feet of a house. It's banned, what, what do we say?
Let me give you an example. I mean, there, there are some houses and some empty lots that are almost under or, or a few feet away from a monarch habitat. A lot of them have been destroyed because somebody wants to build a house in the habitat.
This is a landscape zone. It doesn't affect existing landscape.
I know, but, but what you're saying is, is these habitats need to be restored.
No.
And, and they need new eucalyptus trees to be planted in them to preserve the Malibu, the monarch butterflies over, um, roosting sites that they, they use in Malibu.
Why would they need to be restored? The, the trees die?
They die of age. Some people have overpruned their trees. Other, other property owners have, you know, cut down part of the habitat or all of the habitat. And, um, and right now, because they're in such danger and peril, people, um, are restoring these habitats. And grants are now available to do so.
And, and, and I don't think we'll propose a step in.
It's not a question of dis, you know, I, I'm just asking for an exception to restore their habitat. Whether a structure is one foot away or five, you know, whatever.
We, we have.
The expert says, and there may be other trees that we're not aware of, that they, they like this little microclimates and.
Okay, that's enough.
So we, we have.
And they return to the same places year after year.
We got it, thanks.
We have this proposed rule that says, none, none of these bad things within thirty feet of the house. We can just leave it at that. We don't need to say anything about butterflies or.
If, if somebody wants to plant eucalyptus forty feet from the house, because.
No, we, we're, we're taking them, thirty feet isn't what we decided on.
We just did.
That's what's in the staff report, and that's what I think we're saying, let's.
No, I thought we were going up to like seventy or something.
For all of those bad species?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know.
You want to have, uh, eucalyptus thirty feet from houses on standard? I don't think so. I don't think you want pine trees thirty feet from houses, standard.
So, so you would say fifty feet for all those bad things, but the exception to thirty feet for eucalypts if they're, if they're habitat.
Now, I can change that and say.
Do that again?
What?
Say what you just said again.
I was going to go seventy feet, but he's saying fifty. But.
Just to.
Whatever the distance is.
Yeah.
We want an exception for butterflies. And we can add to what the language I say, saying.
So, so the, the concept, the concept is this, if, if you want to plant a eucalyptus tree, you got to be fifty feet from a house. However, if there's a monarch butterflies floating around within thirty feet from the house, you can put it there. Is that, I'm just trying to understand what it is you're saying.
If you can identify.
That's what he said.
Or restore, and I'm going to add restore, a monarch butterfly habitat zone certified by the city biologist, you can do it.
How about if you just say, everything fifty and beyond of the bad species, except eucalyptus thirty and beyond, and then you don't have to go through that, that process of documenting it's restoring something?
Because I don't think we should have eucalyptus thirty feet from houses.
But you just said you want to do that.
I want to do that if it's an identified monarch butterfly zone, habitat, which is probably, probably eight of them in Malibu.
But to, to, maybe to call out one of Pat's points, maybe instead of focusing on monarchs and eucalyptus, we say, say fifty feet for, for these, this list of trees to be arrived at, which we're saying may be table two. And then we say, unless it is host for a, you know, protected species, whatever it is. Because we may find, kind of one point Pat made was, we don't know what other species are impacted.
We do know that pine trees aren't.
Well, but you know what I'm saying?
I guess Steve's point would be, what eucalyptus tree in Malibu wouldn't be a habitat for a monarch?
Anyone that's in a flat windy place. They, they tend to be in gullies.
Pat could speak to this more specifically, but we've had conversations about this, and it, it's not just any old eucalyptus tree. It's really specific conditions.
It's very specific.
That, that foster the, um, roosting habitat.
And all you have to do is have the city biologist say it's roosting habitat.
So are you worried that people are going to take advantage of that, John?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. I mean, we're talking about a tree that hasn't been planted yet.
Well, okay, so I don't know how common it is for maybe Jessica, Jessica reviews landscape plans to, um, at some, I don't know if it's even common for people to put eucalyptus trees on their.
Some people do propose them, but I haven't seen any that have ever been proposed in the ecosystem that, uh, the monarch butterflies would like. They've been in a line down the side of the property, but.
Yeah, the, the thing is, is very few people plant eucalyptus. And then if they want to, all they have to do is come and certify it's a habitat zone.
And we could, I mean, we can, rather than have the city biologist certify it, we can have, um, some qualified expert.
They, they review it anyway, right? Qualified expert.
Right, we can, we can put that language in.
Certified biologist.
But now, there's, you know.
Not just your brother-in-law.
We're, we're, we're thinking about the globulus, the sort of typical, really tall, skinny eucalyptus. But there, there are also some really nice, almost shrub-like small ones that.
I hate to tell you, but there's, I think, I grew up in Whittier, where they first came to California, as windbreaks. There's probably five hundred varieties. Want to go through five hundred varieties?
There's seven hundred and fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty. We're not going to do that.
Right, so.
So why bother? Okay, but anyway, um, do we have consensus on that?
I don't, tell me what we're consensating on.
Consensus is, okay, you guys want fifty feet or seventy feet?
I want fifty.
Okay, fifty feet from a house. You can't plant any of that stuff on that list unless.
The five, the list of five, or are you talking about attachment aid?
Attachment two, or whatever it is.
Attachment aid, table two.
The whole list.
Okay.
The whole list, except if you happen to have a, a potential or existing monarch butterfly habitat, a certified biologist can get you a pass on that.
An expert, a butterfly expert can identify.
Yeah.
I, I'd, I'd rather it be a protected species habitat, because I, I, I don't know what we don't know yet.
What?
Instead of specifically monarch butterfly, I'd rather have it, monarch butterfly is protected in, in context? No.
I don't know of any species that has to have eucalyptus.
Koalas.
Koala, yeah. I, I, I mean, I'm just thinking something like, I don't, monarch butterfly or other protected species, something like that.
Do we have a list of protected species or Malibu's ordinances?
I believe the city biologist does.
Animals or plants?
Uh, it would have to be an animal or insect living on the plant.
Well, I mean, there, there's, there are lots of plants that are, animals and, and wildlife.
If a mountain lion ever walked by, he's a protected species.
Yeah, I think that, I think that gets difficult.
Well, otherwise, we're so specific, we lose.
And we're only talking about the fire-prone plants that we're prohibiting. So I don't think it's going to end up being, I don't know that this list of plants is going to be that important to, um.
I, I don't know.
Protected species.
I know, but that's the problem. They have to come in and get a determination. So some guy walks in here and says.
Only for monarchs.
My cat, my cat is protected. I want to put up a, a palm.
Your cat's not a monarch butterfly, so I'm just.
That's what I'm saying. It's for monarch butterflies because they're specific to eucalyptus trees. Now, if it's a koala, we can add that, but we don't have any.
How, how many people, and I, I, you may have answered this, I just couldn't hear, how many people are planting eucalyptus trees today?
Well, Pat's was correct, that we had a, for example, we had a house on east, um, sea level. And we made them protect the eucalyptus trees because it was a definite, no question about.
That doesn't answer my question. The question is, we just had a fire. And I, I think there's some information out there that says eucalyptus trees are basically dangerous, okay? So I'm just wondering, how many people are running to you, the local eucalyptus store, buying trees to plant on their property?
Not many.
Okay, and then we're making, we're doing a whole bunch of work for something that.
No, we aren't. We're trying to save the monarch butterflies, which has gone from a bazillion down to nothing.
Well, if I want to save the monarch butterflies, I'm saying thirty feet from your house, plant, oh, go plant an eucalyptus tree. Just keep it away from there. And thirty feet or more, if you plant them.
No, no, no. The difference is, is you don't put a, a eucalyptus tree in and you have a monarch butterfly habitat.
You don't.
You don't plant one and have a habitat. You have to plant one in a specific place that's protected from this and has it, you know.
If you're the monarch butterfly expert, I'm not, I don't.
Yeah, and to be clear.
I got monarch butterflies in my yard. I didn't, I've got a eucalyptus tree and some milk, and we didn't plant, they just came. I mean, I don't know where they came from.
Then they like it there. And you could apply.
And to be clear, you can still put in a eucalyptus beyond fifty feet without having the biologist's determination.
Right.
Okay.
I think you're covering the topic, and this could always be revisited in the future.
It's going to be revisited. Okay, we're taking a break for, uh, ten minutes. Nine
Gotta wait for our secretary. She should be here in just a moment.
Can we talk more? Wait for the secretary? You have to wait. Go ahead, Kate. Make it get it. On tape. Kate, open it up, John. Let me just say one thing before we could go. You know, Mike is like...
Well, I gotta open the meeting.
Open it up, go ahead.
The planning commission is now back in session. The second half of the meeting is dedicated to Norm Haney for being the last remaining member of the audience, Steve Yearing.
Just, you know, Mike, if you sit here and do this, one of my concerns is, you know, we're becoming, going out all these rules, right? I mean, and, and I'm, I think at some point in time, we ought to go back, and if we do it, is there a way to simplify all this stuff that we're saying? You know, if I give somebody a twenty-four-page book of rules of what you can and can't do, most people are gonna ignore it. And I, you know, I wanna, I got an attention span, the last very short amount of time, and if I can't skim through and figure out what the hell I got to do, I'm like...
Well, I don't think we've, I don't think we've done that. We tried to keep it simple, and you have to remember that these are for new houses that have landscape plans...
I understand.
That the staff is gonna review.
Well, we're gonna, okay, so we're gonna bury them, and...
I don't think so.
I, I think you make a good point in that the community education and outreach component of, you know, making sure people understand the importance of doing this, not just because the city said so, but because this will protect your neighborhood and, you know, your, your own home.
You know, sure...
That will probably go further than any list of...
I, I think you're right. I mean, it's the hope, you know, and somebody used to talk about, you know, we should have some, I don't know, welcome wagon, that when somebody moves in, you know, some document that says, you know, here's what a septic system is, here's what, so they understand all the components of living here, and this thing about fire should be one of those, and I think if our fire story is good enough, people will start paying attention to this stuff and, and on their own do some stuff.
If we were talking to residents, that might be true. But a great proportion of houses being built today are second and third houses and Airbnbs, et cetera, and it does, it's not the same old Malibu. So, you know, and they, they hire architects to learn this.
We'll do that later. Go ahead.
Okay, we're now on five, right?
We've been on five, we're on five.
Okay, we're now on six.
Finish five, we're on six. We're not done, we're not done with five.
We're not done.
We're not, okay.
We're not?
No, I, I just wanted to point out that we don't have it anywhere here, and I think it goes in five, that these, we should be putting margins in driveways and streets of some minimum, like ten feet, like what the fire department requires, so that people aren't planting right next to their driveways. And similarly, that there might be some call to make a similar boundary with respect to Esha, so that whatever, and I'm not completely an expert on what can and can't happen in the, the buffer zone, but, you know, you don't want a palm tree like super close to Esha, for example.
I just wanna point out that where I live in Point Doom, and probably everywhere else I've ever been in Malibu, people plant on the public right-of-way.
Yeah.
Okay, well, and, and, and when it was brought up to the city council, they chickened out. Okay? And therefore they're...
Well, I'm talking about ten feet, ten feet.
From the public right-of-way?
When Laurie Seals tried to run in there for...
You're, you're talking, you're talking, probably in some cases, thirty feet from the pavement now.
So...
You're gonna clear.
So then I guess the comment would be to say not within the easement, which is typically wider than the street itself, and is maybe ten feet on each side.
See, that's already a law. That, that land belongs to the city. I mean, it's, it's use.
Does it help, Bonnie, or, or Pat, does it help us in any way in terms of enforcement to then reiterate in this bit of code that we don't want trees too close to roads and driveways?
The public works department maintains the right-of-way, and they review landscape plans and, and all the development plans. So if they have a concern about planting in the right-of-way, they'll add a condition to the, uh, the permit. They're not looking at it from a fire protection standpoint, so if you want to have us add something related to a setback from driveways, that's, I think, doable.
My experience in my neighborhood, dealing with the fire department and looking at the code when I did, you know, several years ago, they were then, and presumably still, saying, "You need ten-foot clearance from any driveway," or, and that's fire code. But obviously, that isn't being observed in the city now, so maybe it needs to be in the city code, in, in this ordinance also to...
Well, it's, again, if, if it's in new development applications, it could be implemented through this ordinance. If it's existing development, then that's a whole other thing, and if people come and plant trees on the weekend, then that's harder to, you know, track down, but...
Is there any reason not to put it in?
Not that I can think of.
Well, all I can tell you is I have never seen, maybe I'm wrong, I've been through a thousand applications, I've never seen the planning, the public works department say, "Gotta be ten feet or anything."
They don't, they don't, they're not concerned about setbacks from driveways. They're concerned about...
It's a fire department thing.
From the right-of-way. And they won't, they will typically condition a project not to improve the right-of-way, other than like ground covers or something.
And where I'm at, the fire department does come through and say, "Yeah, you have to clear this and that and whatever," because they're within ten feet of the street.
Yeah, they're just being taken care of.
But it's...
Your microphone.
It's sporadic. At this point, they're coming, like you said, every five years or so. It varies.
What I'm saying is, number one, we have lots, a lot of lots in Malibu that are fifty feet wide. Okay? Lots of them. Now granted, we have the big ones that are, the one-acre lots on Point Doom typically a hundred and ten feet. So I would rather leave it to the fire department.
We can, we can follow up with the fire department and ask if that's part of their review, and if it is, then, you know, they, they can make that...
You can put it in if you come back with an answer. Consensus on that?
I don't, you know, actually, I don't think it is part of their review, from what I've seen over there. I'm not certain, but I don't think it is.
What specifically do they add? Something like planting within thirty feet of structures or ten feet of driveway, something like this?
Not or.
Oh, right, yeah, sorry.
You could just add another line item that's not, you know, it can be just a separate thing. It doesn't have to be related to this.
Do you wanna do it, or do you wanna have them come back with an answer on whether it's...
And maybe it could be, you know, trees, or maybe just the bad trees, because obviously, you, if you wanna be planting some shrubby thing in the right-of-way, that's not the end of the world, but if you put a big tree, then that's precludes a lot.
What's the goal in terms of fire? Is it just so we know you can drive out of your property?
The goal in terms of fire is access, and yeah, not have, having tunnels of flame.
Yeah.
Do you have consensus on that? Or you want them to come back with an answer from the fire department?
Would it be with no, no growth within easements or ten feet of a driveway, or just ten feet of any roadway?
That.
Ten feet of...
Driveway or street.
So within ten feet of any driveway or street?
Yeah.
Hey, all I can tell you, though, is that's gonna have an irregular look on Point Doom. I mean, most houses are right off, are probably in the right-of-way.
Then they'd have the neighborhood setback. They'd have, there would be variance for that reason.
No, they just built them in fifty. That's all.
And, you know, was that just the list on that, on that table two, or...
I don't know. I don't know.
You guys wanna do that?
Well, again, I, I think we're heading towards... Can we come back with an expert to kind of go over what we've come up with?
So then what, to give that expert table two within the ten feet for a starting point?
Talk to the fire department.
Okay, I'd like to propose we have a consensus that the fire, we get a comment from staff on what the fire department thinks about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, consensus.
Towards, towards the notion of banning it within ten feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, consensus there.
Okay, now we're on fences and walls. And number six.
Six.
And this is all about wood fences. Well, I don't understand, and maybe you can comment on, you have a cement fence. We wanna ban those because eaves blow up against them? Is that our rationale?
This was just about flammability, so wood, or we could just exchange the words, swap out the word wood for combustible or flammable or something.
We already did something about adding the word plastic, and was that on this same item?
Yeah, I was gonna make a definition for flammable materials, including plastic, et cetera.
Okay, now, I'm assuming, this is one I'm serious about, flammable materials includes ficus bushes. Okay, so any, any lot line quote fence made out of ficus is banned.
That's not where, I, I know that you, you're probably alluding to the fact that hedges are defined the same way as fences and walls in the code. That wasn't our, our goal here to address hedges specifically, but it, you know, certainly makes sense. I think that...
Well, I'd like to have it be specific.
Yeah, it needs, we do need to make a distinction either way.
Yeah, so flammable, I want it written such a way as it bans flammable fences. In other words, in the side yard setback, it's a continuous, whatever you want, however you wanna do it.
So, John, I've got my wood fence up front, and then right behind it, I've got my row of ficus trees.
Both are banned.
Within five feet of a structure.
Yeah, well, flammable fences under this...
I'm just...
Yeah.
Okay, so they'll, they'll consider both the fence and the ficus trees as one and the same?
If they're in the side yard fence, in side yard setback, they're considered a fence.
Okay.
And the reason for that is I saw three houses burned down because of that. And there's, there were plenty more. I drove around Malibu Park. You could just see that ficus toasted off the side of these houses.
But just to be clear, so like if, if there's a hedge line that's at the street forty feet from the structure, this won't impact it? It's only those right-adjacent structures.
Well, also, included in this is no way do I wanna change the forty-two inch.
Well, that's, that's a separate thing. I mean, if they could, if they, I would address this and then deal with that as a second item.
Yeah, as a second item, yes.
It's number eight, right?
Yes, this is number eight. So if that is a second item, and that's in this section, I believe.
No, it's actually Commissioner Yearing's trend. It's later.
Okay, later. Okay, does anybody else have anything else? We're just saying, if it can burn, you can't use it as a fence.
Done.
Within five feet, yep. So, so basically, just the wood fences to something like a flammable material fence or whatever? Yeah.
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 Okay?
Okay.
So that's six. So now we're on shade structures. And as I mentioned before, our definition is gonna be eaves, not building.
And I think Pat mentioned or clarified that it's already in there, that you'd measure, the measurement would include eaves.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the resolution.
Okay, and, and then we, we wanted to change the fact that it, it includes, calling it a sage structure, but it includes any ability to grow plants on it.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Anybody else have any problems with those? That section? Okay, we're done with that section. Now we're down to the height thing, number eight.
If there's, if there's consensus about this on, from the commission, I mean, you don't need to go into a long discussion about it. It was just a, a concept that we had as staff as a way to perhaps discourage, I mean, discourage people from adding the line of hedge behind their fences, because people want privacy. Over and over again, we hear this, that forty-two inches is not adequate, and based on our conversations with fire department and share of staff, they didn't have a concern about a six-foot front wall or fence height, and it seemed like it would solve potentially, um, there's a fly buzzing around. I'm sorry.
What do other cities do? I mean, is, is forty-two inches the standard that everybody uses, or...
I think it's kind, it's, I, I haven't done that research. I think it's probably kind of common, but...
It, it varies between six feet and, and forty-two inches, three and a half feet, somewhere around there. They seem to be either one or the other. It depends on the level of privacy. I think, I think in Calabasas, they, because they have a lot of residents who really try to get a lot more privacy, they allow it six feet solid. I might have to look into that, but it varies between the two of them.
And quite frankly, you can drive around Point Doom, and you can see brand-new fences with brand-new, what's called a Malibu hedge, put in, that's, that's ten feet tall behind it, within two inches. It's just common. The other problem is, and, and I just wanna bring this up, we don't need to beat a dead horse, it is very hard now on Point Doom to see the mountains. You do not know you're on a point. So many twelve-foot hedges.
So, John, what do you wanna, what do you want? You want six?
I want, I wanna keep the old rule, forty-two inches.
Forty-two inches and not six feet?
Right.
I agree.
I, I, I mean, I, I like the intent of this, because everyone's doing this anyway by putting up these hedges. It seems like this is the lesser of two evils in that sense, in that, okay, if you're gonna insist on getting that privacy in there, then just put up a fence, make it non-flammable, and be done with it, instead of...
But you lose the neighborhood. You lose your neighborhood.
We're already losing it because of putting up these hedges.
Because of non-compliance. That is, that's not what the law is. You drive down Cliffside Drive, and there's, from Fern Hill to the end, there's four houses that don't have a hedge over ten feet.
Yeah, the other...
You don't even know there's a house there.
Right.
If all of those hedges were six feet, John, would that make you feel better?
The other reason is sixty feet from a fire truck, a house burned down on my street, because it's surrounded by hedges and nobody knew it was on fire. We probably could have put it out.
And, and I understand...
You can't see what's going on.
I agree with John that we don't wanna institutionalize this non-compliance.
And, and, and it is, I can show you a picture of the end of Cliffside, where the no parking sign is at least ten feet below the top of the hedge.
I understand. I mean, but your concern is not the six-foot hedge. It's...
No, it is the six-foot hedge.
It's the twelve-foot or what?
No, my concern is going by a house.
Right.
And during a fire, and seeing if it's on fire.
All right, six feet, I should be able to see the smoke.
Nope.
Could there be some language that, that references irrespective of the height, or whatever you wanna say about height, that it'd be, still be view permeable for a six-foot tall human?
We have language... We have a, a law we've had for twenty-six years that says your front yard has to be viewed permeable over forty-two inches. That, that, that means you can drive down the street and see the houses. And if you can drive down the street and not see any of the houses, it's a different world.
Right, I'm aware of that, and then I was thinking, like, okay, so you could plant the hedge plants, but there's still a foot or two of air between each one, or something?
What?
He's, he's suggesting that you space the hedge, hedge plant so that you can see them.
So if you, you could have the effect of, yeah, this is a sort of effective privacy. Psychologically, it's a barrier, but if you really wanna look through it, you can.
Have you ever driven around, well, drive around any town, for example, Santa Monica, okay? You don't drive around through tunnels. You drive around and you see houses.
True.
Okay?
Well, I'm, I'm with you.
We are very much going towards driving around through tunnels. And granted, I'd be absolutely amazed if a compliance officer went out and made somebody cut their hedge down, even though it was a day old, but there's a reason.
If I got a twelve-foot hedge, and the rule is six feet, I'm, I'm more likely to, I don't know, I guess I can't say that'd be more likely, but I'd probably be happier with six feet than forty-two inches.
Yeah, good luck. Go down, good.
I was actually gonna say something along the same lines, is that in cases where code enforcement is dealing with a hedge violation, I think it would be much easier to gain compliance from a property owner if the compliance involved a six-foot non-flammable fence as opposed to a forty-two inch.
And it's back to your earlier
I don't want to live in a town.
And it's back to your earlier comment. Albo's changed.
No, it hasn't. I don't want to live in a town where I can't tell there's a house on my street. And there are very, name me a town where you can't do that.
I mean, I don't drive around looking for houses, so
No, but I mean, there aren't any.
I agree. It's turning into an individually gated community.
And there's no reason to change that law. It is more dangerous fire-wise. We're talking about fire here. To not be able to see what's going on in a house.
I don't necessarily buy that.
And the sheriff, flat-out said, the big-time sheriff, flat-out said, worst thing you could do.
Well, I gotta say that I've got peace of mind knowing I've got a six-foot fence twenty feet from my house, the divembers are coming from that way, I've got, you know, an inch, whatever thickness of heat pay that's gonna block a lot of that. It gives me a good peace of mind. When I look to the front of my property, and I've got forty-two inches, and then every other plaque is open, it's just, it's just gonna fly through. I mean, and I don't want to go and put some hedge or what have you, and you know, I'd prefer to just have a simple wall that will stop that. So I'd lean towards six feet, though, because otherwise that view permeable section allows the divers to blow through.
You could go in, you could go in your front yard setback and build that wall.
Inside the setback, agreed.
Yes, outside the setback.
Yeah, sorry, and inside towards my house, yeah.
You can do that. If that's your purpose to fight fires, you could do that. But if your purpose is to block yourself off the street, from the street, cause a long linear on Cliffside Drive, there's probably a thousand feet in a row
Right.
of hedge. If that fire got to Cliffside, it would burn half those houses down.
Well, that's a
I can show you pictures on my phone.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying ficus won't burn, all right? Whether that's the cause of, that all the houses burnt down, I don't, I don't know whether
If you read this guy's report, he's talking about lateral
I'm just trying to figure out, look, if we got the residents who lived around and brought them in and say, what do you want, what would they tell us?
The old timers would tell you, I want, I want Malibu. The new guys would say, I want to wall myself in because I could give a rat's ass about the rest of Malibu. That's basically the difference.
The higher the walls, the less of a neighborhood you have.
Yeah.
Just, you know, getting, seeing your neighbors on a daily basis, saying hi, waving. You can't wave if there's a huge wall there.
You have to jump.
And quite frankly, well, for example, the change is, I defy you to drive from Zumares to Doom Drive and see any mountains. Used to see all of the mountains.
That's also because they're putting, you know, eighteen-foot growth instead of a six-foot fence. I mean, you know, there's a, there's an argument on each side, and we're trying to trade off protection
What's the argument?
The trade-off of protection from fire in this case, which is what we're focused on, versus that desire for privacy.
You're telling me that a ficus fence is a fire protection design?
No, I'm saying it's worse, far worse than a six-foot fence, non-flammable material, which if, if, if
Well, we're gonna come back to this, but I will drive you around Point Dume and show you, every wooden fence has a ten, every wooden fence has a ten-foot ficus fence right behind it.
Your concern is that even if we put a forty-two inch or a six-foot, they're still gonna put these ficus lines right behind it?
We had a house on Cliffside that was a big problem in the last election because the city was gonna go shut the guy down, cut all of his stuff, twelve-foot ficus. Okay?
Okay, so a lot of what you're talking about is non-compliant right now. It's a code enforcement issue.
No, if you look at the older houses, the people who value neighborhoods, they don't do it.
No, I'm saying, but the ones that have these really tall hedges, it's non-compliant, right?
Right.
It's view blocking.
Well, they're also building six-foot wood ones, too.
Again, it's a code enforcement violation, right? So what can we talk about here that's, that's
Right.
And I'm saying, don't, don't change the code because there's a fire reason not to do it, there's a neighborhood reason not to do it. Okay?
And what is
And there's also a police reason not to do it.
And we don't change, look, the code is what it is. And it's been that way for how many years you say it is, okay? And it ain't stopping this process. I mean, they're, and I just, and I think it's because people do privacy a little bit more today than they may have in the past. I mean, you know, when I lived in New York, my neighbors would walk through my house. They wouldn't even knock on doors. They could come in anytime. They can't do that anymore down there.
Yeah, but you know what else they could do? I have a neighbor who was cited by our compliance officer. Now grown a ten-foot fence, and he's now building a guest house. Okay? You can't see it. This is what happens.
But we're
So now, the argument is that if they build the high fence, they're gonna do illegal construction behind it?
Well, that's what's happening.
So that's coming back to big hedges. I, what I'm, I mean, the intent is to find something which helps slow down fires, as I read this. And so I see that higher fence as kind of the the most enforceable way to help with that.
If you want to stop fires, take the fence all the way to the ground. That's what we've been talking about, flammable material.
And this is going to the city council as a recommendation?
Right, recommendation.
So maybe what the recommendation should be, the two of us think that maybe it's okay, and two of us don't agree with it.
Yeah.
I mean, just so, look, it's something we should, look, it's something we should
I was actually gonna suggest that, that the commission discussed it extensively and was spoilt on that.
And I hear your, I mean, I hear your point regarding the neighborhood character, the standards. I agree with you, okay? It does change the neighborhood, but I don't think us saying that you can't have a six-foot fence is gonna make a rat's ass bit of difference.
We're not saying it. The code says it right now. We are considering changing it. Why don't we say twenty-foot fence? You got more privacy.
Okay.
That's my point.
Well, the point should be that if we're gonna do this, and if you don't like, that what we need is a code enforcement component that says we're gonna hire however many people we need to go
Now, Steve, give me a break. This whole thing we've been talking about for three hours is a hundred percent dependent on code enforcement.
I understand.
Okay, so don't tell me, gee, we shouldn't do this because code enforcement might have to do something.
No, 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 but there's a, there's a different component in dealing with the new houses being built, and having some rules around that. I want to, you know, I don't want to be
This isn't just for new houses.
I don't want to be the code enforcement person walking down Point Dume saying, cut your hedges, I mean, because I may not make it to one end from street to the other.
This is not for new houses. Everybody, this will change the code for everybody, right? This does not say
This doesn't say that somebody with an existing six-foot fence has to cut it down. This is, this applies to
It says it's now cool. Everything else we're considering tonight is prospective, and we're gonna say this one is retroactive.
That's not, that's not what we're saying.
Oh, if I've got a six-foot fence now, and this passes, my neighbor, my neighbor can have it and I can't because he's new? We're gonna say that?
If you, if if you want, if you're putting up a new, it would apply to any new fence. If somebody has no fence, and this, and the staff recommendation was put in place, then somebody could come in and put in a six-foot new fence. And if you already had a fence, and your fence was compliant with the existing rules of forty-two inches, and you wanted to now go up to six feet, you could do that.
Exactly, we're going retroactive.
No, it's just like, just like you couldn't apply to plant a eucalyptus within twenty feet of your house after this, it's the same basic concept. If you already have a eucalyptus there, it could stay.
No, if you have no fence, no fence, and you're not building a new house, you can walk in and put a six-foot fence.
You
Just like new eucalyptus, just like new eucalyptus.
No, it's not retroactive because you would be coming in to apply for a new fence permit. It's not, you don't have to just build in a whole new house.
So if you've got a six-foot fence, it isn't legal. Do you have to apply for it?
No.
Okay, then it's retroactive.
John, okay, and just, I mean, I know you're passionate. You've talked to me about this
Well, I'll drive you around Point Dume, you'll believe me.
We've done that. I mean, I've driven around Point Dume. I understand, and I understand your passion, and I appreciate your but I think we should send this one up to the boys up in the big seats because there's a, there's a group of, there's a number of residents who live here who are doing what they're doing, all right, and are gonna continue to do what they're doing, and we can pass laws to them blue in the face. But unless there's a commitment to change stuff
There's guys dumping sewage in the rivers, too.
How's that got to do with it?
They're doing what they're doing.
Well, I think, I think at this point, if you, if there's consensus, we can, we can write it up that way if it's a split decision on this issue.
It sounds like it's split. I just wanted to make one, one comment about that. I, I don't buy the initial presumption that whether it's forty-two or six inches or six feet has any effect on whether you're gonna allow a tall hedge to grow behind it.
Agreed.
I don't buy that presumption, so, and that's partly why I say it's fine to keep the forty-two inch fence, because that's what we have, and the real, the real question is, how do you address that, that
Fence behind it.
The fence behind it that's gonna be there, whatever, whether it's forty-two or six feet, that fence behind it's gonna be eight feet or twenty feet, or, you know, so that's the problem, and changing the fence height requirement from anything but the existing forty-two doesn't solve it.
And we have a sheriff who has told us, you got a fence six feet high, they're gonna rob your neighbor, not you. They're gonna rob you and not your neighbor.
Okay.
And he said, he had two recommendations.
That's why I got a dog.
Get a dog and cut your fence down.
I got a dog.
Okay, that's what his recommendation was. And we're gonna say, go ahead.
But so you're conflating the point simply that, like, what do you do with that twenty-foot tall ficus hedge? It doesn't, it doesn't relate to the fixed solid fence question at all.
And to fix that, you don't allow
It does from an enforcement standpoint in terms of giving the code enforcement officers some leverage to, not leverage, but an incentive for someone to come into compliance with six feet, if it can be solid at six feet.
If this passes, do you think the code enforcement officer is gonna go down Cliffside and tell everybody they got six feet?
I'm not telling you that this is gonna become priority number one with code enforcement, because code enforcement prioritizes things based on health and safety primarily. And so I'm just saying that when this does come up, and there's, they're trying to work out a compliance path, this would help. There's no doubt in my mind that this would help. Is it gonna solve every problem? No. Is it gonna help with, when they're trying to get compliance with somebody? Yes, it will help.
You're saying moving it to six feet would help?
Yes.
And, look, I'd like to make a motion, or at least whatever, a straw vote, whatever how we're doing at this point in time, that says, let's vote if it's, if we got a majority, let's report that up. If we split, let's report that up. We're gonna be here all night long.
No, no, we don't, we're not, we're talking about a continuance.
I see.
For that is being reported up.
Let's just split it tonight, and go back, if we're gonna do a continuance, come back and think about it.
Straw vote and move on.
But let's just move on, yeah.
You ready to move on?
Uh, did you want to propose a straw vote?
I would like, yeah, I propose a straw vote that says, I would like to make it six feet.
I'll second that, or I'll align that.
Yeah, I vote no.
And I vote no.
Okay, there we go.
It's a split. We can think about that, and we do the next thing, maybe I'll get, you know, I can get smarter, or however it works.
Or maybe Jeff will show up.
Well, I said, then it's
It's a huge mistake. Let's go on.
I'll be my first.
As you're, as you're looking to wrap this up, I would just encourage you again to consider voting to have staff move this forward based on your input today with recommendations to change what we have based on your comments, and recommend that the city council direct us to come back to you with a second phase, just so that we can go, we can expedite based on their priorities of getting this done quickly. And then come back with a second phase that involves all of the wish list and the detailed items and the experts and things like that that you want to have come back before you.
I'm, I'm gonna move that it come back to us after you've talked to the experts.
I'm just telling you that
It's gonna rain on Wednesday.
That we're on, we're
The city's had a year to come up with something. It's gonna rain on Wednesday. We're in the winter season, and this doesn't have to be passed tomorrow morning.
We've been doing a lot of other things in the last year.
That may be, but right now, we're not gonna have a fire tomorrow morning.
If we postpone this to come back to you, then we're looking at sometime in the spring because we're right here on the, at the holidays.
What about the idea that Commissioner Marks had that said, you know, the next meeting should be some joint thing, where at least we can move it forward, everybody gets to talk, and does that help at all?
I, I think the tricky part with that is in scheduling with everybody's, I mean, we're right here on Thanksgiving, on top of Thanksgiving. I'm just concerned about moving the council
Well, here's my, you know, and again, I got this pile of stuff, and I'm sure there's good information here. Even when I skimmed it, I found stuff that I had thought about.
I'm sure that there is, too. I think, I think we're going, we're touching on, you know, the first cut at this. It's not the last one. I think it's a good idea to come back and and take the deeper dive on things.
It should come back for a deeper dive by us. When you get into a joint meeting with the city council, it's all done in an hour and a half, two hours, and you make stupid decisions because you got ten people trying to talk, and we haven't reviewed this stuff, and this guy, as far as I'm concerned, and I know this is never gonna happen, and it's stupid to say it, but I think this guy that wrote this one, Radke, I would hire him and write the whole thing. But I, I'm gonna make a motion that we continue this hearing.
Can we do this? I mean, look, everybody's trying to move the world forward, okay? Could we do something that says, let's give us a week to go back and read some stuff? And then let's have a meeting if we think there's more stuff that we found after reading, we can reopen the meeting. But we don't drag this thing out till we're all old and gray. Maybe a better way to say that, but
Well, the only way to do that is continue the hearing, otherwise you renotice, we re-staff
With something that says, we notice it, our job is to go back and read this stuff. So we can come back, whether we do it as part of one of our regular meetings, if there's things that we think we significantly missed, we can add them and move that up to whoever, how it's gonna go to the city council, but we don't make ourselves go back through all of this.
We're not going to. What I'm proposing is we continue this hearing. We've given direction to staff on the way we're headed. We want staff to read this stuff. They got it today, too. And, for example, the police asked the local beat officer what he thinks. It's not a good, not a good answer.
He's the guy that's out in the field doing the work. That's why I thought it was a legitimate source.
He's the guy, and his boss who's got, his boss has got thirty-five hundred sheriffs under him. Knows what the sheriff's department policy is.
Anybody else got an idea how we can do this?
I just also want to throw out there just that our next priority is going to be the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which has some state deadlines associated with it, and so we've got a lot of other council priorities to focus on, and that's why I'm eager to get something forward to council, which is what they ask for.
I think, I think we're close enough on this that we can bring it back on a continuance and dot some, some i's and cross some t's then, based on the input, and not take a whole evening with it again. We'll get Jeff Jennings' input on it. He will, like, cut through with a machete and just go, yeah, that's good, that's good, that's bad, but, you know.
How big's our next meeting, buddy? You know, I mean, we got a lot of stuff
We're putting out the packet for the next meeting this week, and then there's no second meeting in December, and then right now, my list for the first meeting in January has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine public hearings, and an extension, and administrative CDP. We are packed.
One favor.
We had nine for the one, two meetings ago. It lasted half an hour.
Can I just, by way of clarif, are we at the sense where we think we've addressed it all, and that's why we're talking about continuance now, or do you feel like there's more on the plate still?
Well, we're the tail end of the blocks.
Oh, no, we're getting ready to go home.
Okay, because I still have two things I want to talk about.
And I want to ask one favor also, maybe before or after, but if Pat can kind of read off what he has, I don't know if we want to do it yet, or you want to go first?
Not yet, not yet.
So let him go first, and if, because in my head, then, I think I can answer Steve's question better, which is, what do I feel is the right thing to do? I think that perspective, you know, it might be, hey, we're actually in a pretty good place, let's just bring it back here and get it done, or do I, do I feel like we still need that input, so?
We'll have that conversation.
Yeah.
Okay, one of these is trivial, one is profound. On the mulch thickness, the Ventura standard said, shall be no thicker than two inches, but in our resolution, we have on page eleven of the resolution shall be covered with weed-free mulch to an average, to an average thickness of at least three inches throughout.
No.
So there are two conflicting things there. That's why I called it out previously.
I would say, let's ask your consensus on the Ventura standard.
Yeah.
I'm in.
Agreed.
Okay, that was good. That was good and quick and trivial. And the little more profound is, the city just passed the climate emergency declaration. Ecological change is a big aspect or symptom of that. And we've got this problem with invasives, and particularly fountain grass, which is a huge fire spreader. It, it brings back a more fire-ready ecosystem within three years, rather than the ten to fifteen to twenty years that in, in, uh, the typical historical Santa Monica mountain chaperal. And it's taking over Malibu. So I would, I would be in favor of some kind of motion that requires that people keep it eradicated on their own property. There's a way to, to say that. This is so invasive and so dangerous in terms of fire spread.
How do you spot that grass?
And the only way is, herbicide, not that I would recommend it ever, but, um, doesn't work well on it because it's not leafy. And really, the only way to do it is to dig it out. And then the problem is, when you're digging it out, then you're opening up the topsoil, allowing more invasives to get back in. So you need to then replant something in its place, something good, or, you know, really pack this oil so it doesn't. It's, it's non-trivial to eradicate it, but if we don't do something about it, if we can't at least put it on the books that it's something we want to be having everybody play a role in getting rid of it, then a decade or two from now, all of Malibu is going to be that flash fire grass stuff. And we're going to have that fire every three years instead of every fifteen years. So, I don't know. Can, can we say? Can we, do we have that authority to tell people you're, you, you have to keep your property free of this?
Again, it's, you know, well, I'm saying, one of these things, if we're, if you're going to do it, you got to have a program to, right? Because if we just say, you got to get rid of the grass, like saying you got to have, you only have a six foot, or six foot fence. I mean, it's almost like an education pro, it's part of that education program that says, here's what you got to do to protect yourself in the case of a fire. So it's more of the educational program than it is passing an ordinance here to tell them they can't do it, I think.
I think it would be a good idea to have the city council provide direction on that. Um, there may be, in terms of, um, I think it would be a significant program, um, to implement retroactively. And I don't know if that would be the thing the council would identify as the most important thing. They may want to consider, you know, a, a variety of things to focus those types of resources on. It sounds like a significant one in terms of fire protection. Um, but I don't know if this is the right fit for it and this.
If it's like, if it's like we're, we're banning palm trees, we're saying you can't plant these, it's a big thing. And to tell somebody you would have to remove your existing palm tree, that, I think we were sort of deciding that's a little. Low onerous, but it's maybe less onerous to say, you need to do some weeding.
But is it on this list?
Why wouldn't we include?
It is on that list.
Okay, why don't we, for now?
But then that's the thirty, or that's the fifty foot that we said.
Yeah, except we could always go asterisk, this plant may not be planted anywhere in Malibu.
Right. But the problem is, it's taking over so quickly.
I know, but this is the first step.
They wouldn't be allowed anywhere on a landscape plan. So I think it's really more of an issue of people are either planting them without a landscape plan, or they already have them and they're spreading.
Nobody's planting them. They're, they're just, somebody planted them probably in Sunset Mesa three decades ago. And, because they seem to be heading west from.
Then why don't we just put a recommendation as this thing moves up to the city council, that they should consider something when it gets to them, if they think more action should be taken, they should do something up there.
And, and it's, it's tied in with the, the climate change declaration, because it really is a symptom of that.
And I'm just going to throw out there, is, is this, um, it's invasive nature? Is it actually hitting more public land or more private land in terms of, yeah?
Well, in the meantime, though, can't we just, so you can't plant it?
Well, it's already agreed.
I think we did that already.
Right, right. You just, he's saying we mandate controlling it, if it hits your property.
Well, this says you can plant it over fifty feet.
No, it's invasive. So there's another rule which kicks in.
There's another rule somewhere that, the rule that you can't plant anything invasive.
Is that true? Monica? I mean, Jessica?
Monica?
Yes, that's true.
Okay. Then, uh, that's a big deal.
It is fountain grass, correct?
Okay, well, that, that's like passing a law saying you have to cut your hedge.
Craig, that's fountain grass, correct?
Yeah, penecedum, fountain grass, yeah. Well, it is like passing a law that says you have to cut your hedge.
Okay, anything else? You want to read back, uh, what we have?
Just one, one last, is it, trying to balance Bonnie's desire to get this thing moving forward and at least some, you know, desire on the part of the commissioners to get a better look at this thing. If, if we took a week, would you guys be willing to get to a special meeting, like, in the afternoon sometime to get this thing solved?
No, I, I want some expert opinion, too.
I was going to say, I would absolutely, if we can be certain that we've got, you know, one or ideally a couple of experts to, like Clark Stevens and somebody else. If, if Marty Witter would come, that would be great. I don't think Klaus Radke's available. I think he's in Hawaii.
Well, we need to have staff read this stuff. We need to read it.
Yeah.
And we need to have some expert read it and tell us where we're going wrong. No, it's fine with me.
The, the only time issue would be, you'd want the experts to be able to read a staff report with our provisional decisions made, so they could say, yeah, this was a good decision, or this is not a good decision.
You know, my sense is that we're not that far off, all right? I mean, you know, there, there, there may be a couple things that we could learn as we read, that are probably important, but I, I don't think we're talking about major changes to this stuff. And, and, you know, maybe.
Well.
What, what do we know?
I think we maybe.
Let's let Pat read it.
In terms of the, the question of, is there more that could be done, I think the answer is yes. And I think that experts could be really helpful in terms of providing guidance on where to prioritize those things and, and, you know.
I'm just worried, I'm not, I, there's always more that can do. I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's anything critical we didn't get.
I think we, critical.
That's the only thing I'm worried about.
I think of just reading this for a half an hour before the meeting, is a critical thing we missed. This thing about fire fronts and, uh, linear, linear growth.
I agree.
Well, we don't have that in here. We just have it next to the house. We don't have it anywhere in the other rest of it, nowhere. And I don't understand more than ten minutes of it, of reading it, skimming it. So that's a huge deal.
Okay, how do we help Bonnie get moved forward? That's the question. We, we got to find a way to help everybody.
I think John is right, though, that the, the, the fire season is passing now, and there, it's suddenly, this isn't as urgent, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, an evacuation plan is more important than it.
The, the council made this a priority, so that's, that's where we're taking our direction.
Yeah, but, you know, I've been through eleven fires here. It's not my priority to, the only time we're ever going to consider this, to do it in one month or two months, uh, rather than doing it right.
I'm not, I, I'm not asking that we do it wrong, okay? I'm just, we've got different. Right? I mean, I'm just trying to find a way, is there, is there some path that we can help get what we want to get done at the same time not slow the train down?
I would say, you come back in the second meeting in January, uh, and you have consulted with experts and at least read this stuff. And we've already gone through ninety percent of the nitty-gritty. We just want to go through it at a meeting and see if we missed something big, or some expert says our list is wrong. You forgot this. Or, you know, we're not talking about spending four hours next time. We're talking about either finding something that's really major, and if we miss that, we screwed up.
Make a motion.
Can we make a list of questions and give them to an expert, so we got answers in front of us when we come back?
Okay, well, my, my.
We're, we're not going to be able to get this back to you until the spring.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Like, probably February or March.
And we're not going to have a fire by February or March.
It's not a matter where we have a fire. The question is.
How many projects are going to be approved in the interim without these requirements?
The biggest thing that we're trying to do is, is protect the community against future fires.
So we're going to rush it through on a four-hour discussion without.
Maybe the thing to do would be to say, assuming that we read it back now and we feel like we're comfortable with enough of it, to send it to the council with a, an expressed intent and structure to the meeting, where you, we know the experts are going to be at that meeting, and we can show up to that meeting also.
My argument against that is I've never been to a council meeting where they seriously considered anything.
But we can sort of.
More than two hours.
Well, then maybe we have the joint meeting.
Bonnie, how about this? Is there a way, I mean, you said, you, we're going to get a second bite of the apple at some point in time. What, what do you think the timeframe to get a second bite of the apple would be?
In the context of the housing element, it may be a while. But in the context of, um, if there are follow-up items that, you know, aren't part of the draft that we've discussed today, that are among the materials that have been submitted today, uh, that we can bring back more quickly, we can do that, you know, outside of the context of the other things I was mentioning. But, um, so I don't have an exact answer for you.
Steve, can you explain to me what the difference is? We do a good job and do it in February, or we punt and do it now? What's the difference?
Difference, I don't, I'm not punting on anything, okay? I, we can spend four hours just to we could punt. What, what I'm trying to do is, look, and I think there's, we got competing needs here, all right? I mean, there, there is a ton of stuff we are coming, you know, you got, they got short-term rentals going on up at the city council level. We got ADUs coming back here.
We've already had our hearing on ADUs.
Yes, yes, we've still got them. They're coming back. We're going to spend another four hours dancing around with that thing, all right? Uh, and God knows what else we got going on.
Okay, but of all the priorities in Malibu, what's number one?
Fire was certainly one, but I, but I, but I don't know whether what we've done today to deal with the, the shrubbery is not a, a good start. And the next major thing on fire we should be taking a look at are building codes. I mean, what we're going to do to, because the building is, is equally at risk as much of the, so, I mean, am I better off taking big bites out of both of these things and getting some progress made on, on that versus sitting here and only doing one in the other language? I, you know, I just.
One, one question.
I understand what you're saying, John. It's just, I'm trying to get it done.
I, I, one time in twenty-six years, we get to do this. This is it.
One question, how many applications would we miss if we punt, not punt it, if we put this off? How many applications would we miss if this comes back in February?
There's nine in the first meeting in January.
I don't know how I can, I can't really.
Is it, is it three or thirty?
It's probably closer to thirty.
Could be more than that, hopefully, if they start moving on through.
These are CDP that we're talking about.
Well, it's any, you know, it's any landscape plan. It could be the ones that don't come to you also. There are some things that don't come to the planning commission.
We've got four thousand houses in Malibu.
It's not, it's.
You three guys are smarter than me. What do you want to do?
I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear back what we put down. I don't have a clear sense of whether we, we're close to having nailed it enough to say, okay, move it on, or whether it's, I feel like it's still completely up in the air.
We can hear what he says, but my point is, I don't know what I don't know, because I've read it.
Right, right.
And, and I got it, and it's good stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, let's hear what we did.
You and what's-his-name pushes.
Look, can we have a quick summary of what we, we did?
Yes, give me one second. So I have eighteen or nineteen. Some of them may be a bit redundant, but sorry, just, you know, work me on that. Um, so the, 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 the first one, obviously, one of the big points was making sure that the measurement from the buildings was not from the walls. We believe that the language in there is already there, but I had that marked down regardless. Similarly, the distance from trees, um, except for the, the SE power line, which I'll get to, is to be measured from the mature drip line, not the center trunk. We're going to research and define, um, combustible that way, so there's a non-combustible and a combustible component. Um, the, the, the main building accessory structure, shade structure issue, to make sure that that six-foot barrier applies to all of them, kind of, you know, collectively, not just, you know, you couldn't do that thing where there's two accessory structures, one foot from another, as long as they're six feet from the main structure. Um, similarly, shade structure, we're going to add to the definition, supports plants or vines. Um, once again, here's the, the combustible material, material definition. Um, we're going to make rebuilds, comply with that fire safety landscaping in section seventeen, five, three, zero, nine, zero, C. Um, we're going to ban.
And, and the vines as a roof, I think that would, otherwise it might be confused, or John's point.
No, it doesn't have to be a roof.
No? Okay, sorry.
It's, it's combustible stuff.
Okay, got it. Sorry, go ahead. Um, we're going to ban prohibit all palm trees. Similarly, we're going to say no wood chips or shredded rubber used as mulch. Um, pretend you would, there's some direction to direct staff to come back and add a section that analyzes the slope issue with kind of everything in here, you know, not, not just specifically for, you know, the, how far the eucalyptus tree is, but, you know, fences, et cetera. Um, the height of the trees by power lines, we're going to go with SE recommendation.
Hang on, on the slope thing, the, the component about erosion control, right? Some potential, uh, exemption or accommodation for, uh, deep root structure stuff.
Got it. Well, my, my thought was the fire behavior on slope, so, you know, incorporating both.
Got it. Um, and so now the, uh, the, the height by the power lines, we're going to go with the SE recommendation. That we, the, the measurement is going to be from the center of the trunks, not the mature drip line. Um, for, I believe it was attachment eight, table two, list of all the, 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 the banned trees, or, or actually not even trees, plants, um, and that's going to be within fifty feet of the, of the structure, with, of course, that exception for the monarch butterfly habitat. Um, you know, provided that a certified expert can, you know, attest to that, 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 that's legitimate. Um, we're going to get a comment from the fire department, read this issue of ten feet from any driveway or street. Um, we're going to prohibit all flammable fences, walls, and that includes this, this ficus tree fences. Um, obviously, the, the, the commission discussed extensively and was somewhat deadlocked um, on the front yard height of the, you know, the fence wall gate issue. Mulch thickness, we're going to go with the Ventura standard. Um, and then we are going to make a recommendation to the city council for possible, you know, further or more aggressive action regarding fountain grass.
And on the flammable, I think it was the third to the last, the flammable, um, ficus, that was within five feet of a structure? Is that correct?
Correct, yeah, that was on, yeah.
Um, also, we talked about clustering. I, I think it came up on that slope analysis. Maybe just add something there, would that be, yeah?
We, I had a couple of additional ones, uh, with regards to number three in the table. We were either going to expand the table more for vegetation or possibly produce a second table. We're also going to add, um, no fake grass within zero to five feet. And I think Commissioner Marks, you started talking about this, too. We're going to look into that zone B with regards to linear foot of vegetation as opposed to the square foot. There he is.
Okay.
Um, I've, a couple of things that I, we talked about that aren't in there, um, and I don't know if we came to consensus on proximity of trees, putting some spacing between them. And I, I had proposed that they be no closer than the height of the tallest tree. As just a measure for, so if it's twenty-foot-high tree that can grow.
Is that the issue? We were deferring to the fire department on fuel for?
No, that was, that was street.
Fuel modification?
Ten, ten feet from driveways, I thought, was fire department.
We were going to get input, we were going to get comments from the fire department on that.
Yeah. Um, and then sort of similar to that, we kind of left hanging the recommendation about mulch areas max twenty by twenty and with five feet in between them. And I think that four hundred square feet is a large area. We didn't talk about this, but maybe we could say three hundred feet square foot areas spaced minimum ten or fifteen feet apart instead of five feet. So now, what's, was, can we find a number like that that works for people?
Jessica, you said you're going to have kind of two sets of tables, one more focused on mulch and other on bushes or trees? Is that, and that would line up with what you're asking for a shift in that language?
I was asking for the, on the mulch one specifically, that twenty by twenty thing that we had there.
Well, first off, were you going to set up kind of separate tables?
I'm, I'm going to try to figure out what works best when visually, I mean, they're going to s, two, two separate tables, or I'll try to expand this one. It probably will work best having two separate ones, because they have different requirements. And the four hundred feet, the twenty by twenty, came directly from the Ventura County.
Right.
Recommendations, so I mean, you're free to obviously change that recommendation any way you want.
My take on that, it was, it just seemed big, and it, and the five feet between them seemed too small.
Well, I, I just want to, my experience with mulch is it burns very slowly. The problem is putting it out. But it's not the size of it. It probably, the mulch fire across the street from me probably burned no more than a foot an hour in spots.
And, and personally, just for.
So I don't think the size is that important. The, the, the thickness and how, how much of it is important.
Or, and or the proximity between patches, so we're not having a spread.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, what happens is the ember's starting. So you usually have multiple patches that are going at a foot an hour.
Jeremasa, can I show something? Um, Commissioner Hill, what I'm, what I'm interpreting Jessica to say is, um, that mulch discussion versus the plants, like, I, I have a much bigger concern, kind of like John does, where it sounds like kind of the mulch, if it were only five feet, it's not going to, going to really jump. But it, it's more if. But it, it's more if you have that bigger growth, which I think we need to see the feedback.
Yeah.
Do you align with that, or do you still have the concern with the mulch?
Okay, even if you wanted, without any further analysis, just go with the 400 square foot standard, I would still at least say 10 feet in between, because if, if they're both burning, and you're running around with a hose trying to put things out, you don't want to have to be fitting through that five-foot gap.
But are you talking about a 10-foot sidewalk between each mulch patch?
Not a sidewalk, I'm just, an area that's not planted with, with, you know, irrigated plants.
So you're basically talking about, I would imagine, gaps between flower beds and, and planting beds and things like that. So you're talking about instead of five feet, you would impose something bigger than that between planting beds. And you're not just gonna probably have areas of mulch randomly in your yard.
But if you had an acre, and a lot of people have an acre.
And I'm just thinking.
You're talking 10 of them.
That, that five feet is an almost continuous planting bed, where that, it just seems like you, you want to break that up a little bit more.
On mulch, I'm, I, I don't personally don't feel that concerned about, I think five feet would be enough, cause the flame should be pretty low, all the documentation I saw. It's more the growth that I'm, what, what's that, John? Right, so I, personally, that's where I stand, but.
Do you have, so is there some consensus around that? Whether to change the the spacing?
I'm not overly concerned. Cause you're right, it burns slow, so.
But we don't have consensus.
Okay.
Sorry.
That may be something that we can bring back too, once we, you know, once we looked more into the slope suggestion and recommendation that you had to.
And that's something an expert would have a comment about.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's it? I, I personally think we went through 80% of it. And I also personally think that we do have to look at what we missed and correct it. And, and I also, and this is just my opinion, I don't think December and January, we're gonna have a fire. Okay?
Now, but what is the timeframe, if we wait till then?
It's not a, yeah.
What is the timeframe that gets through city council, so it's, it's a law?
So right now, we have this, um, tentatively on the council's long range. The very soonest we could do it, if you adopted a resolution tonight, would be, uh, January 13th. And so the second reading, um, would occur the uh, you know, 14 days later, and, um.
End of June.
Yeah, and then it would go into effect.
And, and I want to point out, Steve.
30 days after that, except for the parts that are part of the LCP, which would have to go through the coastal commission.
And I just want to point out, this is, we're talking a difference of 60 days. And on 60 days, especially during a holiday?
One and oh for talking 60 days.
It's not 60 days, it'll be longer than that.
Till we have our next hearing.
So we'd have a planning commission, we'd, if we continued this now, we'd hear it again in January, maybe, and then the council would.
We have too many, we've got too many things going on to bring this back and get experts and write a staff report. We've got short-term rentals and ADUs and all these other things, so we're, I'm talking, we're talking about spring.
Okay, and I, what I'm, my point is, this is incremental, we're only talking about houses that get CDPs in that incremental period.
No, you're talking about houses, any new landscape plan, it could be CDPs, ACDPs, administrative plan reviews.
I go back to Rommsfeld, you go to war with the army that you have, that's what we got.
Okay, but we're, if we have a fire in Malibu, the difference between the houses that get approved between now and this becomes law, will have zip effect.
I don't know when.
And, and if we don't do it right, it'll be a big effect, it'll be 25 years before this one comes back.
Okay, John, but it's not about, it's not about any fires that happen now, it's about how many things get approved between in the extra time.
And that's my point. We got 4,000 houses, and maybe 10 or 15, we have 45 for the whole year on, on the rebuilds, okay? And, and in the last two months, we've approved, you know what, five? So I'm talking about 30, 40, 50 houses versus 4,000.
How many landscape plans?
There are many more than that, there are many more landscape plans than what Commissioner Maza is, is citing.
So there's 100 out of 4,000. Doing it, doing it right, or doing it half-assed, is worth it.
It's the, 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 perfect becoming the enemy of the good, is what I'm worried about here.
It's not that.
It is.
It's the fact that.
The council would like this to move forward as soon as possible.
The council doesn't, the council doesn't want us to move forward, when some guy's given us all the maps, all the tables, everything, and we have a, a whole magazine on how it's done by other places.
John, Commissioner Marks.
Would you be happy if we read this stuff and make up a list of questions that Bonnie then submits forward to the city council as part of this red?
I've seen city council hearings.
Commissioner Marks, where, where are you lining up on this?
I'd, I'd like to get this forward as, you know, expeding as possible without being stupid. I'm thinking we've got a pretty good list here, keep it moving and get the experts in front of city council. I mean, you know, that's where my head is on this, I think we might agree to disagree.
Have you ever seen city councils deliberate like we do?
I know what you, no, I know what you're saying.
So do you trust that we will come out with a good law, or it's worth 60 days of us rehearing it? That's the whole point, I mean, if you guys, I, 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 let's just take a consensus. I'll make a motion that we ever come back on the nearest date possible to review what we've done and review the new input. I'll make that motion. And if we don't get a consensus, then we'll try another one.
I'll second that, and with the observation that Commissioner Jennings will be in the process at that point too.
Right. That's true, but, you know, he's.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying that's helpful.
Yeah.
So the motion is to, to continue this to date uncertain?
Well, I'd pick a date, I mean, Bonnie could probably pick a date, probably be a lot easier for her, but if not, we'll do it a date uncertain.
I, I would, I would say, and first or second meeting in March.
Okay.
At the soonest, but that, I mean, that's not really a date certain. Probably the second meeting in March.
No, and I also just want to point out, other things are important, okay? Soho's important, that's 18 months ago we had a hearing. So I want to put this in perspective, we're not talking about 18 months from now. A lot of stuff gets pushed off.
This is, this is so on this are two different items.
I know they are, but everything's, you know, we gotta do it now.
Do you want to take a vote on the motion?
There's a motion in a second.
Somebody.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Maza? Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
No.
Commissioner Uring?
No.
Motion fails?
No, no.
Can it come out to, to?
I, I don't, is there, have we dismissed any possibility of doing a joint session with council? Cause that seems to me like the ideal, the ideal thing with an expert and maybe a special, special meeting.
I think that's up to the, that would be up to the council to decide to do that.
Would that be our motion then?
If you, if you want to make that your motion, the council may just take up, they may want to just move forward with the input that you've given and move forward with an ordinance.
You gotta make an, if you're gonna do that, you have to make an argument to the council that says, why is it more important for us to all get together and do this versus taking the data that we have, letting them use it up there, cause, and I don't think we can make that argument.
Then we, then we could foreshorten the process, we wouldn't have to, uh, come back to us one more time and then go to them another time after that, we could.
You can also remember, talk to your individual council members or, and other council members about things that you think, and the, things that you think, um, you'd like to see that aren't, that weren't covered in this draft, and that the, the importance that you feel about having, uh, you know, additional things covered about hard, hardening structures and.
I'd like to make a motion then, the motion is that we move it up to the council and that each of the commissioners, between now and January, when it gets up there, we have a chance to read the document, provide questions to staff, and staff will include our questions in the presentation to the city council when it goes up there. So at least we've got our issues on the table, uh, they can, you know, they're gonna decide whether they want to listen to them or not anyway. But at least we've, we've taken our chance to go back and review what we think is important, make sure we get that on the table when it goes up there and let them vote on it.
And you think that'll actually happen?
Yeah.
Has it ever happened before?
Different question.
Something staff can do to just, like, if, if the motion is to say, you're gonna do a report that is gonna incorporate each of our individual questions and.
Which we're not done in public.
But, but we would just submit that through emails to each of our.
He could do it in public comment too.
Yeah, and, and that, and that and a nickel won't, won't buy you squat, I mean.
Well, yeah, I'm still going after the.
I can do that all day long.
I mean, this seems like kind of a good middle ground to keep it moving, I mean, in, in my book, so I'd, I'd second the motion and.
Okay, well, I just, again, to argue, you can comment on anything the council does. You're proposing to go to council with what we've done and trust them to do a decent job. And trust staff to come back with the research answers on all the stuff that we want to research. Which we don't even know what it is, cause we haven't read it yet.
Well, John, I, look, I, and I'll just, I think we've done a decent job, and I think if they, if they did what we recommended here, we would have the foundation for a good ordinance and to, to deal with the stuff that we know. If there's additional major stuff that we, we haven't figured out yet, cause we haven't read it, I think it's up to us to figure out a way to get that up to the city council and make the argument strong enough that they're gonna listen to us. And that's what we're here for, right?
And, well, what is staff gonna say about six-foot fences in front of houses?
We're gonna tell the council that we made this recommendation, there was a split discussion among the commissioners, and it's up to the council.
John, if this comes back, you can bet your life Jeff is not, you're gonna lose that battle, at least you got a split right now.
At least they have a chance to convince you that you're wrong.
Could the staff, could, could a staff report to council be very emphatic about, um, that they should listen to us each individually or however, that whatever input we have should be, that, that we're expressly, since we haven't finished with it, we're expressly hoping that they will take more from us or something.
If you want to include in your resolution, um, as part of a, a recommendation, that you strongly, you know, emphatically encourage the city council to refer a second phase of the ordinance back to you for further recommendation because of the important issues, then you could include that as a recommendation.
So to play that back, so we'd have kind of a second, our, our second bite at the apple after they bit our apple?
Only if they don't pass it.
I, I, that's.
That doesn't, that wouldn't preclude you from providing your own written comments and testimony to the city council.
Yeah, how about, how about in the staff report, you include this debate we just had, that says, there was information we received that we did not have time to fully consider before the meeting, and if, if we go in front of the council with information that we think is important as a result of our reading, we ask them to take that seriously.
So what you're saying, is you're gonna report to council, that we did not consider full deliberation?
We did not fully deliberate, yeah.
No, we did fully deliberate.
We didn't fully deliberate.
I agree, we didn't fully deliberate, but the, the other thing that's playing in my head is if I, if I try to, you know, Zuma got knocked out by a brick falling on his head in the middle of this fire, you know, Rick was out there fighting the front line, Mikey was, you know, out there with hoses saving everything in, in, in Malibu West. They're as invested in this as any one of us, so, I mean, in that sense, even though, John, I can respect what you're saying, that, that the handoff is not gonna be as ideal as we'd want, and we aren't necessarily getting this language to that, what we, what we, we don't know what we don't know. That, that we all recognize, but I, I also think that there's gonna be enough conversation on this and enough personal, uh, investment from everyone on the council that, that I don't think they'll take this lightly by any means.
I, I just, here's my real point. 26 years we've never done it, this is our only chance, and we're doing a half-assed job, period. And I think it's really bad for us to do a half-assed job in the middle of winter, when it's raining, when we could do it right.
You know, I just don't like the comment, I did not do a half-assed job. I mean, I studied the stuff as much as I could ahead of time, made the best decisions I could make going through the process. There may be a couple of things that I missed, but I don't believe there's anything that major that won't allow this thing to go forward and provide some benefits to the residents who, who are looking to protect themselves from future fires. I think we've done part of that, and I think we, you know, we can continue to beat this to the, we're dead, but I don't think it's gonna make a rat's ass bit of difference. And I shouldn't say that.
Lead it to our dead, I think we've done 90% of it, and we have to review it, because we haven't considered the facts. And that's our job, to consider the facts, we got facts this afternoon that are germane and we haven't considered.
What, what I'm weighing right now is I feel like I'm a deciding vote here. And, um, it sounds to me, just, I'm sort of speaking out loud personally, that this comes down to, if we were to pass it up to them now, this is a whole project for me to take on, that I, that's not on my plate now, and my plate is already pretty full. But this would be, be me writing another, you know, 10-page memo or something to council saying, here are all the expert things that are in all these documents that we didn't consider, and I, I can't do that right now.
I'm also, I, I, I'm gonna have a conversation on fire with the fire captain, so I mean, you know, the, the weight of my words is not gonna weigh much. Now granted, there's a lot to review here, but I'm lining up with Commissioner Uring, where we, we'd have looked at this, we, we've experienced, I, this is, this has been probably 60% of the cycles in my head since November of last year. I mean, I, I, the last two months, I've spent more time on fireharding my house than I care to talk about. So I mean, I, it's, and, and reviewing everything that's been presented. Granted, there's some late submissions that, yes, there is value in here, but I see us as slowing it down when it could get through. And we'll have 100% of nine, of a, of a, of a 90% right solution, instead of no solution.
And Craig.
Can we, can we put in a recommendation that?
All for a couple of months.
If, recommendation that if it goes to council, that, that it requires that in front of them, be the expert at the time, and that I get 15 minutes, like a development applicant, and then I can actually make a presentation of, so that if I'm gonna spend time, that this is, you're seeming to be implying, at least the way I read it.
You get your, I'll get you the 15 minutes, I get enough, how many, how many minutes do you get in the city council?
You only get eight minutes total.
I think you get eight, but if there's another person that picks up your torch after you're done, who has eight minutes, then you've got 15 minutes.
It's gonna go through the council in two hours, you can go through the way the staff.
And what foundation is it gonna pay me to do this?
And, and Craig, I don't think you've got, look, I don't think we missed 20 pages of comments. I don't think we missed, we may have missed five, okay, I don't know, but I don't think there's 20 pages of stuff that we have to incorporate in.
There's 200 pages of stuff, so when you, when you say not five or 20, you're saying the germane stuff?
No, you say you have to write whatever many page, I don't know if there's that many pages of, of comments.
There are, there's, I mean, this, this is a really broad topic, it covers the building code, fire department codes, everything. We're dealing with the zoning aspects, which are within our purview, and we're gonna continue to work with our other partners and do outreach and education to the community so that they can take care of their own properties. And so I, I agree, this is a, I think it's a very good start, and I, I really hope you'll pass it along to council.
Well, yeah, there was a, a motion in a second to, you know. Okay, yeah.
With, do, do we want to have, I think Commissioner Hill called out a, maybe a friendly amendment that said something like, to be considered to be brought back to, uh, planning commission for kind of a second read, did you state something that had affect? Do we want to put that language?
Frankly, that can't be done.
No, 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 I, it, it can be done, that you recommend that, um, the council address additional issues that the planning commission, um, has.
Might have missed.
Is, yeah, will identify.
Yeah. A, a, and, and bring it back if they so choose, do, would, could, I mean.
It would come, yeah, if they would adopt this ordinance and, you know, after they have their public hearings and everything, and then direct the planning commission to revisit the items that they feel need additional.
So we're down, now we're down to counting votes on the council about whether they would send it back to us.
Yeah, good luck.
Right? I mean, we, maybe we can sort of informally.
And, and, and let me ask you this, if the council sent it back to us, how does that hurry things along? We're back on my.
The council would adopt the first ordinance and then adopt a, a follow-up second ordinance.
You basically have the, I, I don't want to put, you know, numbers in, but you'd have the 90% passed, and then to the extent more, you know, nuance or investigation needs to be done with, say, slopes or something like that, then it could potentially.
Then you'd have a whole new ordinance, and go through the whole new process?
No, you would add to the existing ordinance.
You would, you would be right.
Just like we're doing here.
Good luck, that ain't, that ain't gonna.
Is there any way to, just now, in. Is there any way to, just now, informally characterize what science or expertise we might have gotten radically wrong?
Don't know.
We don't know. There's no way to, like, in terms of the field of stuff we've addressed, what, where might there be dragons lurking?
The draft, the draft documents that were presented to you were accompanied with quite a lot of other, the resources that we used, and so it's not likely to be drastically wrong. It's based on what other people have done. It's.
Here's, here's one thing we missed. Here's one thing we missed. Clark Stevens has had talks a lot about this thing that, and he's doing a study right now. He told me we're we're almost ready to publish it. It's about the flow of embers and how actually it helps you to have plants out fifty feet or some distance from, I don't know what.
Right, and yes, there are issues like that that can be dealt with. It just doesn't have to be tonight. It can be in a, in a next phase.
But I'm just concerned if we just kick it to the council, they're going to be too much up-down about it, and they're going to, there may be some good thing that we could include that they won't get.
Well, the fire science is going to be evolving quickly, it seems, and the conditions, you know, that, uh, I don't think anyone could have anticipated.
We're going to learn more in Australia.
Right, exactly, exactly.
So, look.
It explained to me is what's the rush? I mean, we waited twenty-six years. You tell me what's the rush, I'll vote with you.
The rush I see is that if we don't do something with this cycle, I'm I'm concerned we're going to be looking at next fire season and still have nothing. And that that's, that's what I'm most concerned with, not, not, not January or March.
Yeah, in February, whatever, we're doing it. When's fire season?
It's less about fires, it's less about. Fire season than about application, numbers of applications that come through.
True, true.
There are, there are less than four percent of the number of houses in Malibu.
You gotta pass, we gotta pass this, or somebody's going to pass it.
Norm, what do you think?
Then it has to be, hey, 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 hey.
No, no.
Let's, let's go.
You gotta, look, we gotta.
Let's go, somebody second Steve's and we'll vote on that.
I did second it, so.
Okay, well, let's vote on Steve's.
Okay.
Go ahead, Kathleen.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so what happens now?
This, I mean, I guess, I mean, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I, I, you know, this is, you know, the, you know, planning commission's, you know, duty here is to attempt to make a decision. So I guess I would ask anyone up here, what would other factors potentially be that could potentially change your mind in terms of, you know, agreeing with, you know, the motion that you now voted no on or so, or some additional aspect?
I would say that that factor would be, instead of getting pushed off till spring, we've done ninety percent of the work, but the first meeting in January. Whatever gets in its way gets kicked to the next meeting. We've had plenty of meetings in the last three months where we got noticed on, one meeting, we got noticed on eleven items, we heard two. Okay, so I don't buy the fact that we can't do it quickly. And if if that, if that, if that may change one of the other two votes, if we could do that.
So if we, so and the timing was to be back to city council by January thirteenth meeting was the, was what you had on your agenda?
Well, no, because you have to, go ahead, you.
What was?
Prove tonight.
Yes, that would, that's the timeline we were working on, was to come back January thirteenth. The the biggest problem that we have is is just preparing everything that you're asking for to come back, lining up experts. And I I frankly don't have the staff to work on this in conjunction with short-term rentals, which we're a part of, and ADUs, and just the, all the other.
Could we, could we?
If you can't do that for us, how can you do it for the city council? We're asking you to go to the city council.
Because you only have to do it once, John.
With experts.
That's exactly right. We're doing it.
And and you say you can't do it for us, but you can do it for them.
It is, it's, it's part of what we're already planning to do, and then, and then we would be done with it.
Well, the only difference is you do it for us instead of for them. That's the only difference.
Could we, could we have a special com, a commission meeting in December? Not necessarily the the fourth or the third Monday, but could we put in a special meeting then and have the rest of this, just this one issue?
Go back to December sixteenth meeting we passed on.
I don't think you can reinstate a special meeting if it's not, or or change the calendar with it out, without it being on the agenda tonight.
What if it's continued tonight, then could we?
I don't think you can continue an item to a meeting that isn't a posted meeting, right?
I don't know why you couldn't. The council calls meetings on seventy-two hours' notice.
We can't order our own special meeting?
Wait, and and so, I apologize, so you want to, you want to continue it tonight to a date uncertain with the idea that it will be a special meeting?
Special meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it requires a twenty-one-day notice. Nobody knows that there's going to be a December sixteenth meeting. I don't see that possible. If you want, if you want to continue it to yourself again, then, you know, we'll do whatever the council wants. If the council wants us to bring it directly to them, we'll do that. So it's, it's really up to you.
Why don't we make a motion and let, leave it up to the council?
No, I'm going to vote against that. The council's going to have a special meeting to consider whether they don't want to hear from us?
The council may just direct us to bring it to them anyway.
How do they direct you without having a meeting?
They will direct us on next Monday night, one way or the other.
It's not on the agenda.
It can be on the agenda.
Well, then why can't we be on the agenda for ourselves?
I, the agenda can be amended to add this as a direction item.
When's our next meeting?
Your next meeting is December second.
Okay, December second. So let's assume that we continue this to December second with the only purpose of having five members here to vote.
They have to have discussion.
No, Jeff can, Jeff can take and watch the video, absorb everything we had.
The only reason we're continuing is, is to consider whether we did a good job.
And and we can.
And 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 I don't, I I'm not going to go to a meeting and say, I have to vote. Well, I could do that right now. If you're not going to let me discuss anything, I could do that right now.
If we could continue it to the next meeting, then we could have an expert in by then, too.
The packet goes out on Thursday.
Right.
I mean, if if you, if the only expert you want to hear from is Clark Stevens, and you know he's available for the meeting, fine, but.
Can we continue it to January third? Or whatever that meeting is.
January sixth is your next.
Meeting, yes.
Meeting, and that's the one with like twelve items on it.
Well, boot one of them.
But John, I mean, and again, I don't want to repeat, but I think part of our job is not to make everybody do double duty. And and we, if we move this and they could, they got to come back, Bonnie's going to have to do it twice. She's going to have to prepare another staff report for whatever comes back to us in January. Then if, whatever we vote on, and whatever how that happens, then she's got to do another staff report to get it up to the city council. And, you know, I don't know what, if there's something that's that major that we missed, we've got the opportunity to sit and talk to the city council either individually or as, you know, in in front of the the meeting and bring up those those salient points. I don't believe we're going to find anything in there that major that we missed. There may be something, but there aren't ten of them. There may be one, there may be two. That there aren't twenty, you know, there's not a, a list of stuff that we've left out of this thing.
I've been to, I've been to many a council meeting where important items were brought before them, and they, they spent an hour or so on it because.
Then it's our responsibility to be able to bring it.
Didn't do a decent job, we came out with probably.
Then it's our responsibility to be able to take, if we think we've got something important, we should be able to articulate it and get it up in front of them so they can make, they can understand that it is important, they should consider it. If we can't do that.
Not as a commission.
Well, okay.
All right, I, I'm now, this is so deadlocked, I'm thinking about what my council member would want me to do at this point, and not being beholden to him, but just, you know, thinking about how he'd, and it seems pretty clear what he would want, um, which would be to pass it up to council now. And I, so I just, I just wanted, I I would vote for that if we could lock in anything concrete that requires them to take more input or that, that, you know, that when we can come before them, that, you know, we don't just get blown off, like, oh, you guys had your bite at the apple already, and you're, you're all done. That that they know that when we come up there.
The council's in charge, and I'm sure that they, they appointed each of you because they appreciate your expertise and your input. And so I I don't know that I'm going to have any more influence on them than you will. I I recommend that you make that point to them.
Then they should listen to us, and we should stay home.
Absolutely no legal way you can do what you just asked for.
All right, well, I'm I'm going to, there's no other way to break the deadlock because you're obviously not moving. And we need to get out of here.
Right.
So I'm.
That's the problem. We need to get out of here.
I know, I know, I know.
Years, we need to get out of here. I think that's really sad.
It is sad, but what do, what's the alternative?
Is to have another hearing after they've reviewed it and spend a half an hour. Okay, that's the alternative.
There's no, yeah, there's currently no motion.
Does somebody want to make a motion? Try another motion?
Pushing, we send it up to city council, and that we, in front of them, if we've got additional iss, issues that we want to have them consider.
We just voted on that, right?
Yes, that's.
We voted on that, that very motion.
Yes.
So you need to make a motion that, something different.
It can, the same person can make the same motion. There's no reason not to.
You know, but we need seconds, and we both can make motion.
You've had additional deliberations, and you can change your mind, or if you want to add something to the motion.
No, I'm not second.
No, I don't, I don't, I, actually, I don't want to send it up. I think we, I think John's right. We need to do it right. I don't, I I still.
Do not understand.
Bring it back to the next meeting, have five of us vote on it, and then it's going to city council. So why don't we just save ourselves the aggravation, everybody else the time, and let's get it up there if we've got something, look, I can't believe.
We've discussed that.
John, John, I can't believe that we are so insecure in our ability to make an argument up to the people that appointed us, that we're going to sit here and do this all night long.
Because I've been through many, 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 many city council hearings.
You got to get better. We know we got to do better at.
And they do not have never deliberated to the degree we do.
I don't think that's the issue about the influence. It's more that what we haven't addressed yet is some kind of expertise that may or may not be out there, that will be of a nuanced degree that we haven't captured. And we, if we, if we haven't gotten it, the council's not going to get it. That's the concern.
It's true.
Yeah, the way, the way that I'm playing this through in my head is that we, we've, we've talked through fundamentally a series of concepts, how far we want to put something from, you know, whatever. If it's thirty feet, fifty feet, seventy-five feet, I, my opinion is that that's going to change over time anyway. The concepts we've got on the table, I think, are pretty solid in that you, you want to keep a distance for certain type of vegetation. You want to have certain types not in certain areas. I I just don't see us adding a whole lot of value to this by having that next session. So, I, you know, you know where I stand, but.
Well, I just want to point out, and this, there's the whole reason for this whole discussion is we got all of this stuff that on a quick perusal has a lot of stuff I never considered and was not in the staff report. So all we have done is go through the staff report and noodled around with distances and thises and that. We haven't had a broad view of what is, should be passed. Have we missed anything? And and my only point is, we've had plenty of meetings where we were so busy, we couldn't do anything, and then we come to the meeting and it's half an hour. Why can't we spend an hour or so on this and do it right? That's my whole point. And I, you know, I may lose this in the long run, but, and Jeff will come in and whatever. But I want to, I want to, this is the most important thing there is in Malibu, period. And it's never been addressed before.
That's why I want to move it. That's why I want to move ahead, because it's the most important thing.
We're going to punt because it's eleven fifteen. It's going to go to city council before the next fire season and get passed. The question is, is it going to be done right or ninety percent or right?
And is ninety percent right going to help the community more than a delay? That's, that's the trade-off.
The delay, as far as I'm concerned, is totally irrelevant. We're in the rainy season. It's irrelevant. And even if it were relevant, we're talking thirty, forty houses out of four thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, I, acknowledging both what my council member would want and what Jeff Jennings would want, I think, I would vote for it if we can have in the record some indication to the council that we would like to see, knowing that we don't have the authority to or, order it, but some, um, some comment that we would like to see it back after them.
Well, you're going to see it back by law.
I'm happy to put that in the staff report.
Yeah, I'll second that.
And make it a strong.
Second that.
Yeah, but I want you to understand.
Along with it moving forward.
No, I I understand, but you know what? This, if if we just say no, and no, and no, we're not walking out of here. There's no, there's no end game. What is your opposite motion?
And can we clarify?
So we cave in?
No.
My opposite motion is.
Well, it's not, from my perspective, it's not a cave. It's me realizing that I have another project I have to do, which is going to be to pitch this hard to the council, whatever that extra expertise is.
You get your, you get your eight minutes if you get the people there.
And I, I'm doing that under protest, but I also feel like my council member would want us to see it forward. Jeff Jennings would no doubt want to see it go forward, so.
He may want to see it go forward right, though.
I'm, I think I have to go down on the side of, you know, the perf, don't let the perfect be the enemy.
Now, when are we going to read the resolution?
We will.
This is not going to come back to us to approve the resolution?
Well, um.
We trust you?
We're implementing the direction that you gave on the draft.
Well, maybe, if you write it up right.
Well, I mean, there's something that you don't like when you, when it goes after the, well, the chairs will sign it. And so the chair will review it and make sure that it reflects what everybody's recommendations were. Um, and then it would go to city council as part of the agenda packet, and you can make any, if there's any.
So who's the chair?
Tonight, you are.
So if I don't like it, it comes back to us?
Well, I mean, either you or the chair.
Yeah, it would be if, 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 if it doesn't reflect the, the, the direction of the planning commission.
If I decide it doesn't defect, reflect the direction of the planning commission, then it comes back to us.
Well, I mean, so if there is a, if there was something that that is, that staff took down incorrectly in terms of, you know, if if for whatever reason, for an example, I said, you know, the, the, the new thing drafted said twenty feet instead of fifty feet, that would be something that you could say, hey, this is, this is incorrect. This needs to be fifty feet, not twenty feet.
But it's corrected. It doesn't come back to us to be voted.
But I, I don't think you can unilaterally veto it and say, I don't.
No, no, not veto it. I may disagree with something you wrote.
And.
Then you, you got a video?
As in, yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I guess I'm struggling to understand, we, we, when you say disagree, do you mean disagree as in staff failed to take proper direction, or you just?
Let me make my motion one more time that says we ship it up. And with that goes, what, the thing that you wanted, the, you wanted, the language you wanted at the end?
I don't know. I want them to appreciate that that we feel like we need to have more input on it. And if that can only happen because we come to the council and address them in their chambers, in their hearing.
Then then the motion should be, what, we also discussed the fact that, we want to move forward, but we discussed the fact that we had, there was information provided us at the meeting that we may not have had a chance to totally analyze. And if we come before them after having read that information and learned more, we ask them to listen to us.
That, how, how are you going to say that exactly? Because I've seen a lot of footnotes in my life.
John, John.
Yeah, no, it's a big asterisk, for sure. How would that read, Pat?
I mean, often, I mean, I can't give you the specific, exact language right now. I can assure you that this process is not lost on any member of staff.
Where, where in the staff report would it say that? Because we've ended up passing things that ended up being in the footnotes.
Because what we really want.
The council made it clear that they want the planning commission's discussions to be represented in the staff reports. And so that is now, you know, there's a, a line where there's a staff recommendation and a planning commission recommendation, and that's part of our protocol now.
Anything recommendations say, basically that we aren't sure we got everything and we wanted to come back if we didn't?
What I envision would be in the staff report, it would say that the commission understands the urgency of of the ordinance, ordinance and the importance of it, and received information, you know, on the day of the meeting that raised additional questions that they would like the opportunity to address for, you know, the purpose. they would like the opportunity to address for, you know, the purpose of, um, furthering the council's goal of public safety and fire protection and all that stuff.
Let me, let me just assure you that, that everybody in the city council is going to watch this meeting.
Yeah.
So they're going to be well aware of the fact, of this process we went through.
Okay, whatever, can we request, can we request also that they hold a joint meeting with us? Can we say we, we request a joint meeting?
Is there consensus for that?
Yeah, I'd, I'd be on with that.
Yeah, that, that'll get it moving, let's make, see what they say.
Sure.
All right, because that, I mean, that, that expresses-
Kathleen.